Are we live yet, Nick?
We are.
You said we were.
That's correct. We are live.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Charlie.
How's everybody today?
Morning.
Good deal. Well, I'm gonna jump in here a little bit and kind of cover a couple things before we call it, call the meeting to order. We are live on YouTube, so be aware of that. But welcome to the March 12th, 2021 special meeting of the Gaming Commission. Our primary mission of the Wyoming Gaming Commission is the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare of the participants in all lawful gaming and amateur activity. During the meeting, individuals who wish to address the commission will be recognized and called on by the president to speak. After the president has recognized you, please clearly state your name, the name of the organization you represent prior to addressing the commission. All comments, questions, responses must flow through the president by addressing the president each time you wish to speak. This procedure ensures a orderly flow of discussion during the commission meetings. All meetings of the governing body of the agency are public meetings, open to the public, except as otherwise provided pursuant to Wyoming Statute 164403A. Again, this meeting is being held remotely. On the link on the agendas, you can watch it either on YouTube or submit live public comment, and then at that point, raise your hand and we'll allow you to come in to the meeting and participate. Again, we may call for an executive session pursuant to 16405A and includes it on the agenda does not necessarily constitute a commission action. President Davis, would you like to call the meeting to order and then we can do a roll call? You're muted still, sir.
Help him out, Charlie.
I'm gonna have to go in the other room.
Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now? Got you loud and clear. All right. Charlie, are you back at your seat?
I am, sir. Thank you.
All right, then, since we got this technically figured out, let's call the meeting to order.
It's 9:04. President Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Vice President Broussard. He is there. Commissioner Cavell, are you here this morning? Yes, I see you, sir. Commissioner Dagel, yes, I see you.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Linen.
Here.
Commissioner Curra.
Here.
Commissioner Pacheco. Commissioner Pacheco is absent. And Commissioner Wildcat.
Here.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have Senator Driscoll on the call? Do we have liaison Driscoll on the call? No. Do we have Representative Walters on the call? No. And we have the governor's liaison, Dan Schiffer is on the call.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? Are you warm?
Doing great.
We are.
How are things over there in the eye of the storm, Dan?
Uh, well, I'm in California right now, so it's, uh, the storm has moved on towards somewhere else. God only knows where, but they got a little rain over here, so I'm sure everybody's happy.
Yeah.
They hate the inconvenience, but what the heck? They need water.
Exactly.
President Davis, at this point, I would, would like if it's okay with you to welcome new Commissioner Cactus Cavell. Welcome. And I'm not sure if you've been able to get the confirmation yet, so I think today you're still gonna be just listening in if I'm, if I understand that correctly, and a non-voting member. But we do have a quorum today and we can conduct business. So, thank you and welcome aboard from myself and our staff, and also I know the Commissioners as well. We'd like to welcome you.
Thank you, and that is Caballo.
Caballo, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Would you like to go ahead and introduce yourself, Paul?
Chairman Davis, thank you very much. Yes, my name is Cactus Cavello. My proper name is Paul, but I go by Cactus. I was a 32-year GM Chrysler dealer here in Goshen County in 2009, became a banker here, so I'm regional president for Points West Community Bank here in Torrington. I've served on several different commissions for the state of Wyoming. I served six years on the Transportation Commission and six years on the Wyoming Business Council. I'm a volunteer fireman for 40 years and looking forward to learn a lot from all you folks. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. Or Cactus, oh my gosh. All right. Okay, Charlie, with that, do we want to go to C, Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll let you start it off.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
One nation, one nation.
Commissioners, are all of you able to hear okay? Are we getting any echoes, any problems? Thumbs up?
Good. Sounds good. Charlie?
Yes, sir.
I have one, I don't see anybody other than, I don't have a lot of viewers on my screen out here. I don't know what happened.
Maybe Nick can come in there and change your view or mic possibly. So you've just got one person on there showing, correct? Okay.
Yes, one person at a time. And Nick's the one I really want to see on here. Oh, there we go. Now I can see a show of hands. All right, thank you, Nick. Okay, with that, Charlie, I believe we had go to item number two, the agenda.
Yes, sir. Item number two, the agenda. We're looking for a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the agenda submitted.
Is there a second at that time?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Randy. All in favor? Aye.
Excuse me, point of order, President Davis. Yeah, we had Commissioner Dagel moved and Commissioner Linen seconded. Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Uh, no discussion or changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried, Charlie. Okay. That, 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 that's, okay, the next item on the agenda then, Charlie, is the approval. Is that right? The approval of the minutes. Item number... Am I missing something in here?
You should have item number three, sir.
All right. Discussion and possible action on the minutes for February 19th of the special meeting of the Gaming Commission. Has everybody had a chance to review these?
Yes. I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Thank you, Sherry. Discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Nick, if anybody in the waiting room has their hands up for any of these, please make sure you let us know we've got a hand up and somebody from the public is wanting to join the meeting.
Okay, I don't see that on my screen, Charlie, so if you've got that.
I do not have it on my screen. Nick would be the one that would be monitoring that for us, I hope.
Yes, I am, and currently there's nobody with their hands up.
Okay, thank you. Just chime in anytime you hear or if there's a hand comes up anywhere. Okay, with that, we have the vote. All right, general business, item number four, are we, that's where we're at right now, Charlie?
Yes, sir. Item number 4A is the election of officers for 2021. We can open it up for nominations for president and vice president. We can continue with the current offers, officers we have, or we can change up, move up, whatever is your preference, Commissioners.
What is the preference of the commission? Discussion here. Do we need a motion for discussion, Charlie?
That would be fine.
Okay, is there a motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Is there a second?
I second that.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I think Randy, I got you for a second there. All right.
Yes, sir.
We're open for discussion here on the elections of officers under item 4A. Charlie, do you want to handle this procedure here?
Absolutely. Under 4A, again, President, we take nominations for president for 2021.
I nominate Bob.
I would second that.
No, it's, yeah, you got your own gear.
So we have a motion by Dr. Barry, Commissioner Barry.
Oh, oh.
Commissioner Dagel to nominate.
You mean the harness and stuff?
Bob Davis.
Yeah, you, no, you don't, it's all included. It's like...
We have... We had some outside noise there.
Yeah. So since you're the parliamentarian in here, Charlie.
I'm sorry about that, yeah. We have a motion and a second to nominate current President Bob Davis as president again for 21. Do we want to do a roll call vote, Commissioners? Discussion? What's your pleasure?
I say we go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Okay, we'll call the roll on that. Commissioner Dagel.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Linen.
Aye.
Commissioner Curra.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Pacheco is absent today. Commissioner Wildcat.
Aye.
And Vice President Broussard.
I might have listed, did Bob accept the nomination? If so, I say aye.
Okay. I see that you have your hand up, Troy.
Well, I was gonna ask Bob if he, if that, what were his wishes before we nominated him, but that's okay. If he's, if he's going with this, then he's going with it.
Well, if you're not going to have the ability or the time to step up, Troy, yes, I will. You know, I was concerned with you if you were, where you were on this.
If you want to do it another year, I'm wait, I'm happy to wait another time or, or never. Either way.
No, you can't get out of it that easy. Uh, yeah, that, that's fine with me, Troy. Okay, Mr. Moore, are you doing the roll call? We did the roll call?
We did the roll call, the motion passed. You are president, so if you'd like to conduct the vice president again, or we can open it up, I can open it up and handle it, whatever you want to do, sir.
Well, Charlie, the simple thing for me to say is, uh, just keep it as a status quo where we're at.
I second that.
And also Commissioners, if we'd like to make for, or show for the record, I see that Commissioner Pacheco has just joined us. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir, for being late.
No problem. We're on item number 4A. We have just completed a motion and a second and a vote for president for 2021, and that was going to be President Davis. Continue on. We're now opening up for nominations for vice president for 2021.
And I would nominate Troy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Troy Broussard as vice president, continuing on for 2021. Is there discussion?
President Davis, call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Thank you, Randy. Charlie?
Yes, sir. Do a roll call. Commissioner Dagel.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Barry.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Linen.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Curra.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Wildcat.
Aye.
Thank you, and President Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our officers stay the same for 2021. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Charlie, let's go to item number 4B, the financial report.
Thank you. I, I do see that Commissioner Pacheco has his hand up. You do? You do. Looks now showing that Jenny does. So...
Okay, Jenny, you have the floor then.
I have, I had, I hadn't even touched my computer.
Okay, Nick, let's hold on.
Well, maybe it's me.
I'm not exactly sure what Director Moore's seeing. Um, I don't see any hands up yet.
Everybody raise your hand?
Commissioner Pacheco's hand did come up for a second.
Okay, Charlie, let's go to item number 4B, please.
Thank you, and I can see this. Item 4B, financial report. Commissioners, you'll see in your packets, the financial reports, uh, you know, reflecting for the last, uh, since December, our expenditures and our revenues. Are there any questions?
Charlie, is there an update on the B-11?
Yes, I can give you an update on the B-11 that we had submitted. Well, I guess there's, there's been a couple B-11s. The first B-11 that was submitted and approved was for three additional staffing members plus an expansion in the office that was approved. We will have an RFP, or excuse me, we will have a posting of another investigator, inspector, should be posted the first of this next week, and then we'll move into the other positions too and start working on those to fill. The second B-11, it was the city and county distribution B-11, and I believe we've gotten that approval at this point, so we're good to start dispersing those monies, so.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Yes.
Go ahead, Randy.
President Davis, I'd like to approve the financial report as submitted.
Moved by Randy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sherry. They're moved and seconded. Discussion? Any discussion on the financial report?
Uh, President Davis, I have one question for Director Moore. Uh, I see we had a $50 non-sufficient funds check. Was that for a, um, a license?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes, and we've gotten that money back.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Do you want to do a roll call, Charlie, or just go a show hands?
You can do a, either way, whatever works best for you, sir.
I think a show of hand, since we can see everybody's hands. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? What's a thumbs up? What's a thumbs up there? Okay, motion, motion passed. Okay.
For those of you, just real quickly, that may not know what a B-11 is, it's an extending of my, of our, the agency's spending authority. And again, for the city and county funds, because House Enrolled Act 95 was implemented after the budget, we have to do a B-11 to, to extend that and have that authority to where we can spend that money. So that, that is, is what we're talking about for, for your reference.
Well, that brings up a question, Charlie. Where are we on this year's budget and with the current, uh, revenue crisis at the state of Wyoming?
You know, I don't have all of that information in front of me right now. We're, we're currently sitting in a good position as far as our budget is. Uh, we were at, right at the first of the year. We were right on track for where we should be with the remaining, um, budget, but then that was also including the B-11 for the additional staffing, so that bumped us up a little bit. So, we're right on track. Um, again, we're getting a little bit out of, we'll talk about the, the, uh, the payments for the Breeders' Award Fund, um, but the big, big, uh, push out the door is the city and county money for, um, the, uh, skill-based amusement games, and that should be ready to go out next week, once we get all the B-11 paperwork completed.
Could, do you refresh my mind, Charlie, on how many times a year this, that we put these checks forth to the account?
Yes, thank you, President Davis. Um, the city and county money from the historic racing, we transfer those funds shortly after the first of the year, and then July 1. We typically have that money out the door, uh, within 30 days of completing, um, those, those different quarter, that, uh, that part of the year. Um, the Breeders' Award Fund, starting next week, we will start doing those disbursements, and that's a, an annual from 2020 that will go out. And then, uh, the city and county and the distributions from the skill-based amusement games, again, that has been determined, we'll, we follow a very similar path as historic racing do that every six months, so.
Is there any question from the Commissioners on that? I know there was some talk about, uh, going quarterly, Charlie. Is there anything about that? Are we gonna still be in, uh, you know, every six months?
Again, thank you, President Davis, on that. The quarterly discussion, I believe, as I recall, was, um, with, uh, we would be posting on the website, um, the quarterly reports, which we do. We do a quarterly report to JAC, Joint Appropriations Committee. We do, um, and then post those quarterly reports on the website, instead of bringing them to the meetings for every one of our meetings, kind of trying to streamline things. However, we, we have looked at some of these distributions, doing those a little quicker if we can. Historic racing has worked well every six months, and again, why, we went with, uh, that same type of a, uh, distribution for the skill-based amusement games because is, because we'll have small checks, um, to some of these, and it gets very, it's labor-intensive for us in, in the office to distribute those quarterly, so it just made more sense. And again, working with the Treasurer's Office, with the A&amp;I Accounting Division, and also discussing with, uh, with the Budget Division, you know, this is kind of where we, we've landed as far as our distributions go, doing those every six months.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. All right, I guess then, if we're, no other questions here, we'll go to item C. Item four, number C, 2021 Race Meets Officials and RFPs.
Thank you, President Davis, again. Item number 4C is General Commission Business. The first, uh, part here is the race meet officials in the laboratory. Mr. Laramende, do we have anybody in the waiting room that has wanted to sign up for this item? We can start admitting those people in if you want to.
Do have two people that have signed up to voice input on item four.
Charlie, do we need to have a motion first before we bring the public in on this?
Um, but that would mean for discussion purposes? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, is there a motion?
David?
Go ahead, Randy.
President Davis, I move that we open, that we open item number 4C for discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dick. They're moved and seconded, open for discussion. All right, now we can go ahead and let the public discussion in on these, Charlie?
That'd be fine, yes. Nick can do that. While you're doing that, um, I'll go over our officials for this next year. This is the first list here on your, in your packets are the stewards and officials that the state of Wyoming hires. And for energy downs, we have Larry Eliason. Larry is a 25, 30-year veteran, um, in the industry. He's worked for us in years past and, uh, is from South Dakota. Bill Brown, you know, another steward we have listed here, is a level one steward. He's from Oklahoma. He's worked here in Wyoming for several years at different times. George Estrada, another level one steward, comes from Arizona. Uh, he's worked with us off and on. He was here last year, and he is interested in coming to Gillette again this year. Our safety steward, we have Pat Mackey for, uh, energy downs. Um, Pat Mackey has been with the state as a steward. He's from Idaho and Montana, um, for a number of years. And then Dr. Erickson, DVM, and his, his, uh, office will handle the, uh, the lab or the, uh, collection of samples and the veterinary services for the state. We also have then on the next list, Wyoming Downs as stewards. We have Dave Wheeler, who is, again, from Idaho, um, that we bring in. He's worked with the Wyoming Gaming Commission for several years. Again, Pat Mackey. Jerry Richards, um, we may have an issue with him being able to provide all summer services for us, so I do ask you at the end of this, that you give, um, me the authority to make some changes if we, we need to. Um, some of the officials, um, are a little bit fluid at times, especially now that New Mexico is starting to open back up. Originally, they were closed for this year again with COVID. Going down the list is John Ward. John Ward, um, has been a steward and also worked for us for the last couple of years. As a safety officer, John Ward, uh, is a former jockey along with, um, George Estrada as well. Um, both of them have been in the business for a number of years. Uh, John Ward rode several world champion quarter horses, and then again, Dr. Erickson has the contract with us, um, for one more year to perform the veterinary services. And then concluding the summer, uh, we'll have, at Sweetwater Downs, we'll have Dave Wheeler again, veteran level one steward, Pat Mackey, a veteran level one steward, Gerald Richardson, um, a veteran in the business that we may end up having to replace, and then John Ward, again, as I told you, been in the business years, and then Dr. Erickson. Dr. Erickson is prepared to deal with the overlapping race days. He has another veterinarian that will be coming on board, so we've got that covered as well. So, very pleased with who we put together. They know Wyoming, um, they know racing, and, uh, they're, they're all in good standing with us and also in other jurisdictions.
President Davis?
Go ahead, Randy.
Um, Charlie, I- Um, Charlie, I, uh, Dr. Erickson's gonna have a secondary veterinarian for the overlapping days. What are we going to do with Pat and Mackey? Cause he's listed as a safety steward at Energy Downs and as a regular steward at Wyoming Downs. Do you have a, do you have somebody else to cover there?
You're looking at him.
Oh, okay, good enough.
Doesn't he look safe?
That's the potential resolution to that, yes.
Very good.
It's one of those situations that this is a little bit fluid and I appreciate you noting that, Randy. Um, and thank you, thank you, Commissioner Lyndon, uh, for noting that. So, and, and that is one of the potential issues I have with the fluidity and giving the, uh, the office the authority to fill in some of these blanks at the last minute if we need to.
And since this is also covering the laboratory, uh, you were gonna send something out, maybe I missed it, or?
Y- yes, I, thank you, uh, Commissioner Lyndon. Yes, laboratory RFP. We received two and, and I did send out a later in the electronic packet. It had just a brief explanation. Um, we received two bids, uh, Industrial Labs in Wheat Ridge, Colorado, and then also ALS Laboratory from California. Um, ALS has changed their name. They were formerly Truesdale Laboratories. Um, the, the bids are very similar, um, in nature. What we will do is when we do an RFP and we do a bid of this type, we have our criteria that's in the bid and the qualifications and experience of the proposer. That is a zero to 55-point scale. Technical approach and, and equipment is a zero to 25 score. And then the cost is a zero to 20 score. Um, and what I'm asking today of you on this is, is we will pick three individuals to evaluate this. Um, I would hope that one of them would be myself. Um, and then, uh, I was thinking maybe Dr. Barry might be interested in jumping in as one of the others. And then if there's someone else that you would like to have, or if you wanted to be a staff person here, Nick, to evaluate, that's up to you commissioners today to determine. And then we will all independently score the, um, the bids. And then we will submit those to A&amp;I, um, procurement section. They will tally them and give us the final numbers on it and then they will notify. So we do not need a, uh, necessarily a approval from you today, um, for one or the other because we still do need to do the, uh, the tallying and the, go through the decisional criteria.
Does that cover it there for you, Randy?
Yes.
Okay, so the, right now, I believe we, is there any questions on the permities officials? We should have all been provided with those for each permittee?
And there are a few updates on though, and maybe for simplicity purposes, President Davis, if I would suggest that, uh, we do a motion in a second to approve the, uh, um, agency's officials, which should be on your first page. Also giving, uh, the authority to the office to make changes if there's cancellations or additions.
Okay.
President Davis, I would.
Go ahead, Randy.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, approve the race officials, the meet, race meet officials for, uh, from the commission, that were submitted from the commission, uh, and give Director Moore the authority to make changes as needed and also allow Director Moore to form a committee to choose the lab. And, um, leave that with Indians Power after the scores are in.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Uh, all in favor, show of hands. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, show a thumb? Okay, Charlie, that, that motion carried here.
Um, President, uh, Davis, we, we need to remember to try to get public comment, um, after we have a motion in a second, I believe.
Okay, do we, uh, want the public comment in here now, Charlie?
We can sure do that if you'd like, sir.
Okay, yep, I forgot to see him there. All right, at this time, Nick, do you wanna let in the public?
President Davis, the two that have signed up for this item are in here and available to talk. I'm not sure if they're gonna talk under four, under Commission Business, or maybe five. General Discussion might be better suited, but they're in here. If they wanna talk, they can raise their hand and unmute themselves and I'll keep watching for hands.
Okay, at this time, is there any participation from the public? Leave it, uh, okay, Charlie?
Yes, thank you.
Continue along here with the, uh, permities officials list. Is, do we need any action on this, or is this just for your information?
No, we would need action on this, sir. Um, just for noting on the record, um, I think I'd forgotten to make comment that Mr. Kaler from the AG's Attorney General's Office is on the call with us today as well. So moving on to the permittee officials, the first one we have here is 307 Horse Racing. Uh, we have the list of their officials here. We also have an addition. They had, uh, contacted us shortly thereafter we received the submission. Mr. Tim Kelly will be their mutual manager. Um, I believe Brandy has contacted, um, I know she had contacted 307 Horse Racing. And if there were any questions, she could sure, uh, answer those on their list of officials. Turning the page, we have Wyoming Downs' officials. Um, they do have one vacancy in here on the Jockshroom Custodian. And typically, for your information, commissioners, when we have vacancies or, or if we have to make changes um, on these lists of officials, that's closer to, that's dealt with by the stewards at the race meet. Um, so, and, and that happens periodically. We have to make changes. And then on the, uh, the final page, we have Wyoming Horse Racing's officials. Um, again, you've got the, the Racing Secretary Mutual Manager, paddock judge, photo finish providers, uh, so on and so forth there.
Are there any questions from the commissioners about these lists right at this time?
Mr. President, uh, this is Commissioner Pacheco.
Go ahead, Dwayne.
Charlie, I did have one question and, uh, unfortunately, uh, we, we went through the, the Race Investigator Certificate Program. So, so now I know a little bit more about the horse racing than I probably should. But my question has to do with the tote, uh, I think it's the tote board. And you know how they have that issue here at Sweetwater? And I see that listed in here. And I wondered, is, is that part of the tote company? You know, the display board? Cause they talked about that being an integral part of, of the live horse racing. And I know that was an issue here because of damage. Who's in charge of that?
President Davis, Commissioner Pacheco, um, and yes, that is the responsibility of the operators. And we allowed Wyoming Horse Racing last year to be exempt from the tote board in the infield due to the wind blowing and destroying the tote board. So that was a one-time approval, one time only. Um, they do have available tote boards through United Tote. They can provide one at a cost and, you know, Wyoming Downs, of course, has their own tote board and they, they plug into the functionality. So that would be the responsibility of the permittee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Randy.
President Davis, Commissioner Lyndon, um, Charlie, uh, after the incident that we had last year in the jock's room, uh, we discussed in a previous meeting that you would hold you or the investigators or someone from, from the commission staff would go ahead and conduct, um, some classes for all of the, uh, both our stewards as well as the jock room custodian and other people who are associated, uh, from the, from the permities. Um, I, I'm assuming we're gonna do that, aren't you, Charlie?
Could you repeat your question? I, I apologize, Randy. I didn't catch it all.
Well, after the incident that we had in the jock's room last year, or the, actually, it was the year before.
Yes, sir.
Um, we had, we had discussed you or somebody at staff doing a class of what, you know, so that we can avoid something like that happening again, both for our stewards and our race officials as well as, uh, the race officials for the permities. I'm assuming you're gonna do that and I just, I, I really think it needs to be done.
Yes, um, President Davis, Commissioner Lyndon, uh, we've done that. We did that last year. Our stewards met with, uh, all the jockeys and the, and the individuals and all the employees. And then when I was available to do that as well, we monitored that extremely close. That, uh, is very important being, uh, you know, let's be professional, let's do this thing the right way. So yes, that has been done and followed through with, um, Nick, or Special Agent Laramendi and Special Agent, um, Steinberg are there, um, constantly through that whole area during the race days. So we're, we're definitely got that covered. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Curra, whoop, where'd you go? Did you have a question there, Dick?
No, no, I, I was kinda mumbling to myself. I thought that was a good answer on Charlie's part and a good question on Randy's.
Okay, yeah, I think that'll be reiterated to the stewards this year again. It's part of the package. Okay.
Yes, we also have a hand up from Mr. Eugene Joyce.
Oh, there he is. Eugene, raise your hand. Okay, well, I recognize you now, sir.
Thank you, President Davis. Uh, I just wanted to comment, um, regarding the tote board. We, we do have a con- contract with United Tote to provide a tote board, uh, this year for our, our racing program. And, and on our officials list, um, I, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the commission. I, and I know that, um, we haven't had a chance to have a track operator safety meeting. Uh, I know that Director Moore and Brandy had been trying to put one together prior to live racing. But one, one of the things I, I did wanna bring up is to make sure that regarding outriders, especially on race day, that we really need two, two outriders. And I know on the officials list, I think we just approved, um, you know, maybe the lead outrider. Um, but it is a specialized talent and it's, it's very important. Um, they're literally the lifeguards in the pool. And, um, I just wanted to bring that to the commission's attention that, um, you know, we, we, yet again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not throwing shade on anybody. We've always put, uh, two outriders on our list of officials, um, uh, to, to be approved. And so I just wanted to make sure going forward that, um, you know, the industry and, and again, adheres to national safety standards regarding outriders. And with that, I'm happy to take any, uh, questions, Mr. President.
Charlie, is that a question that we need to, uh, make sure that the stewards address at the particular meets, or is that something that we need to get some clarification on right now with the other permities?
Well, I, I think that one of the processes, we, we have extensive checklists when we, we come on the grounds, um, for a race meet. And prior to the race meets, the stewards will meet with, um, all the permities. In fact, uh, I had told Brandy the other day to be setting up a meeting here in the near future with the permities and the stewards so we can all be on the same page and keep safety priority one, so.
Okay, is there any more questions for Eugene on this subject here? Well, seeing no more showing of hands, Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you, President Davis.
Okay, uh, Charlie, do we, we need a motion here on these official lists?
Yes, we would, sir. We could do a, uh, one motion to cover all three if you'd like to for simplicity. And then discussion in also too.
I'll move that.
If you have any questions of any of these officials or, or any explanations that you'd like to have, Brandy should be on the call to answer those questions for you.
Do we have any questions for Brandy at this time? Okay, then we are looking.
Then we accept the officers as presented.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dick. Charlie, do you wanna show of hands, or does this need to be a roll call?
I, I think, again, for ease, it could be a show of hands and be fine.
Okay, everybody in favor, raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, Charlie. Okay, next item on this list would be item number four D, Wyoming Bread 2023 Breed Distribution. Do we have Brandy on?
Yes. Brandy, you need to unmute yourself, please. And turn your camera on.
Ah, there she popped up. Brandy, you have the floor. Or the screen, however you want it.
Thank you, Commissioners. President Davis, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Can't see, but we.
The camera's not turned on, Brandy.
Ah ha, there.
That work?
Yep.
So basically, I just gave you guys an update on the Wyoming Bread Program. Um, payout for the 2020, um, awards, uh, awards will be going to the state auditor's office next week. Uh, we're gonna pay out over 2.7 million. And as you can see, I provided a list there of the award winners, um, and where they're from. So you can kind of see the counties and, and, and stuff like that. Um, but basically everything is, uh, we're on schedule for everything. So, um, do we have any questions on the payouts?
Is there any questions for Randy on the Wyoming Gaming Commission stimulus check payout?
I have none.
There ain't no questions. Brandy, looks like you got all this on pretty easy this year.
I did.
Is there anything about the future of the awards? How we're looking? And do you have any early indication on that?
Um, well, the awards, we're still gonna order the same awards as last year. Um, the, I just have to send off the award winners to them to do the awards. And, um, I would like to, um, I'll have a discussion maybe with Energy Downs to, to maybe do them there after one of the races. Um, to get those out, but I haven't had discussions yet with 307 on that.
Okay.
But, um, what we'd be hoping for, um, due to that it's the first meeting, last year we did it at Wyoming Downs. So it'd be nice to get it, I mean, at a different part of the state, so.
All right.
Right now, but I haven't had any discussions with 307 as of yet.
So we can look for some further information at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the commissioners have questions for Brandy at this time? There ain't none. Is there anybody in the waiting room? I guess we gotta address that. Is there anybody in the waiting room out there? Okay, looks good. With that, Charlie, we'll go to item four E, Investigators Report, please.
Thank you. Prior to going into that, if you don't mind, um, President Davis, I'd like to tell you a little story, share a brief story about the Wyoming Bread. to tell you a little story, share a brief story about the Wyoming Bread Program, if that would be all right.
Sounds very good, Charlie.
Thank you. I received a call this week from a participant in the Wyoming Bread Program. And, you know, it was, it was, it was one of those happy calls. We all get fewer and fewer of those those warm and fuzzy calls, especially when you're in the regulatory world and different things these days. But this is an individual, he lives up in the Alpine, that end of the state. And, you know, he he kind of talked around the subject for a little bit and different things. And then he finally just jumped in and and he said, you know, this Wyoming Bread Program, the money that we receive every year, the, you know, the number of race days that we're seeing expanding in the state, the purse money that we're seeing expanding in the state, everything involved has totally changed his family, his children, and his wife, and anybody and everybody he touches. He said a couple of years ago, he was struggling in the racehorse world. And, you know, we didn't, we, well, in 2010, we didn't even have races. So now, his son and him worked together. And there was a time to where they were apart, but the horse racing has brought them back together. Horse racing has brought their, his wife goes to the races, the son, everybody is involved in this. They're breeding. They have, I don't know how many mares they have on their property. They board horses for people and everything. And he started getting emotional. Well, then, of course, then I jump in and I get emotional thinking about it because it's just great. And he said his grandkids, just the whole thing. So I got off the phone and I've heard this story before. And it's, it's a good time to hear it, especially at the end of this last year with all the struggles that not only agency, but we've all endured with COVID and different things. The horse racing end of it, the Wyoming Bread Program in particular, looking at the list, and this gentleman's name's on the first page here. And he's kind of close to the top, not one, not the top, but he's up there in that upper 25% of the top of that first page. But, you know, it's while, nobody understands the expense of running a horse. It's a five-year investment in horse racing to to come to a point where you can get the money. But it's just, it was it was a great feeling. And I just, I was kind of compelled this morning to share this with you commissioners and and the good things that are happening out there. We're all awfully quick to hear about the bad and and the underachieving at times, but it's really good to hear about the good. So hats off to you all. You all make those commitments, along with the staff too. But we couldn't, none of us could function without all of us together. So thank you to you all. That's all.
Very nicely put, Charlie. All right, with that, if there's not any further to do, let's go with the Nick and the Special Investigators' Report.
Thank you, President Davis, Commissioners. I'll be fairly brief for time's sake. In your packet, you'll see a summary from us. I have it broke down into OTB and Off Track, the Wyoming Bread Program, and then Skill Based. Quickly, since the beginning of January to March 1st, we have completed 20 OTB inspections, includes existing and pending opening locations. We've received two complaints over the last two months from OTBs regarding underpayment of winnings and the other one was maybe a miscalculation of a bill. Both of those ended up being unfounded after we reviewed the data and the gameplay, it all came out as they were paid what was due. We've completed 100% mare checks for the Wyoming Bread. So all 780 and some statewide, we were able to complete all of those. We've completed 100% of all the skill game location inspections and we've started round two of those. To date now, we've rechecked Converse, Natrona, and Carbon Counties. With the Skill Based Amusements, we've received two complaints for non-payment of winnings. The first one was handled by the operator. The day that we received it, it was rectified pretty quickly. The second one, we learned that the individual that was trying to cash in their ticket was under the age of 21, therefore not legally allowed to play the games in the first place. That establishment was issued a warning for a violation of House Enrolled Act 95, Section 1J. We've also completed seven investigations this year into the illegal operation of skill games. Those are in Natrona County, Campbell County, Uinta County, Weston County, and Creek County. Of those seven reports, four of those were closed unfounded. When we inspected those locations, there was no skill games located on the properties. Two of them are closed exceptionally cleared. Games are in place, but they're not being operated. Those two locations are currently under appeal. So we have decided to let them sit as long as they're not being operated. One of them was found to be non-compliant. And we've spoken with that establishment. And he was given about three days to have everything removed and rectified. And if he doesn't, then we will be going back and criminal proceedings may arise from that. We also continue to work with area prosecutors on some other criminal cases. With that, I would stand for any questions.
At this time, Commissioners, are there any questions? Dwayne?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do have one question, Nick. And it and it goes back to the Skill Based Amusement Games complaints, the second one where individual wins, he's under 21, but then we call him on it. Can you, I don't want you to expound on it, but are we doing some proactive, as we would call here, compliance checks? We do them with tobacco and and alcohol. And, you know, I kind of feel bad for the person, you know, they'll take your money. But then when the guy wins, we're going to check your ID. And so how does that work? And can you kind of expound on that?
Thank you, President Davis, Commissioner Pacheco. We've had discussions about that, specifically in regards to compliance checks, as Glass Cop does with alcohol and tobacco. We're still trying to work through some of that on how we can find local talent per se to utilize, to get those people and work with those people to have those, the the personnel to assist us with doing compliance checks. But we are in the works of trying to come up with some sort of a compliance check system that we can do statewide for that reason.
We are, on the law enforcement side, when it comes to alcohol, that's actually statutory. So, you know, we have some really good guidelines on that. So it's, it's nice to know that you're looking at that. And and that education piece obviously will help. But I just, I wonder, once again, the trust but verify, you know, how we're doing there. I don't even know if you want to speculate on that.
It'd be kind of hard to.
Any other questions, Dwayne, at this time?
No, sir. Thank you, Nick and Mr. President.
Thank you. Matt, did you have your hand up?
I did. President Davis, Director Moore, Commissioners, thanks, thanks for letting me chat here. You know, Commissioner Pacheco, that that situation in particular where an underage player tried to cash their ticket is is concerning to all of us. And it, you know, as we see these machines out there, you know, in the bars, bars and restaurants, it's a little easier to control who comes and goes. And we do have these in truck stops and we're doing, we're working really hard to make sure that they're in a regulated area and they're watched. And one of the, one of the things we've talked about is that we're going to put closed circuit cameras, which we've started doing in every truck stop so that if they're not right next to the counter where they can be monitored all the time, that the staff can watch who's back there and what's happening. And I want to say too, that on the machine, there's an acceptance of age play before you can, before you can play. It talks about you need to be 21 to play the games. And there are, there is signage in every location as well. But I want to let you know that we, you know, that's an important piece, piece for us. And if there's any suggestions going forward, we're certainly open to, open to those conversations and whatever we can do to help.
Are there any questions for Matt on this at this time? Are there any further questions for Special Agent Nick? Okay, hearing none. Charlie, I believe we can go to item 4F, the Legislative Update and Directors' Update.
Thank you, President Davis. Item number 48F, excuse me, is the Legislative Update and Directors' Update. We'll start off with Senate File 56. Senate File 56, I believe, is on general file today in the House. So we are working the budget bills the last couple of days. So things have been pushed a little bit. House Bill 125, which was the simulcast deletion of of the statute on the 100 mile, that was in committee earlier this week and did pass out of committee. And it's hasn't been up on the floor yet that I'm aware of. I looked this morning and didn't see it there at least. And then finally, House Bill 133, that is the sports wagering bill, it was defeated on the floor earlier this week and then it was reconsidered the next day. And it's still live and well and passed the House and over on the Senate side now. So that's kind of the the most recent updates on that. It's a very fluid, as you can see from my flutter of emails you get from me, sometimes they're within about 10 minutes, it changes. And I do apologize for that. Commissioner Wildcat and I, the other day, were back and forth texting, hey, it's up, it's not, trying to keep track of it all. You know, it's definitely a dynamic process. If you, if you haven't been involved in it, it keeps you hopping. So we're trying our best to keep track of that. Are there any questions on the legislative side of it, Commissioners?
Commissioner Wildcat, is there in any insight that you can put forth?
Not at this time, unless there's anything specifically that you want to inquire about.
Okay, I didn't know. How is, how are you proceeding with the sports wagering up there?
We're still going forward.
Stumbling forward.
So, so there's, of course, with everything with COVID, COVID kind of slowed everything down, but the operations here are still going forward with it. So.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Charlie on the Legislative Update at this time? Okay, Charlie, I believe you have one other thing in here.
Yes, I do. Directors' Update, I'll be brief, hopefully. You know, one of the things, Commissioners, I don't know if you saw the email, we are going to be putting together the bios. I do have a, an individual that's working with our office to get those, she will be, or their office will be reaching out to each and every one of you, hopefully, to to come up with some nice bios we want to do. And then ultimate goal is to get photographs of everyone so we can have those on the website. Shortly, we will be, oh, excuse me, we do have Commissioner Pacheco, myself, Special Agent Laramende, Special Agent Steinberg, and Brandy all participated in a course with the University of Louisville College of Business on investigators. We all passed. We all have our certification or we received our certificate. I believe, I know everybody in this office, did you get yours? Okay, Dwayne's nodding his head. Yeah, so that was a quite a long process with the University of Louisville College of Business, but it was a good course. And I'm glad we've gone through it. It was also, we were able to, for Nick and for Mike, they were able to use that time for their post certification. And I believe Commissioner Pacheco, if you need that too, Nick can get with you and make sure that, you know, that goes on your post certification as well. You know, one thing to bring in mind, Post has identified our agency as a law enforcement agency. So that, I think that is an advantage for us. And and again, just to remind everybody that Special Agent Laramende and Steinberg are both law enforcement officers, fully empowered when they're doing their jobs with the Gaming Commission. Additionally, throughout the state, if any other agency has the need to ask any of the guys to assist, we have that option to where we can jump in if asked by other law enforcement to to help them. So that's a nice thing. And that's pretty much all I have, I think, Directors' Report update. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Are there any other questions to Charlie at this time?
I do have one more thing.
Ah.
Sorry, I looked at my notes. Another thing that's that's been coming up here recently, there are some changes with some of the county approvals. We'll be monitoring that in in getting those passed on and making sure that the off-track wagering locations are adhering to those new county approvals and different things. And so that's kind of on our radar now, watching that. What we will be doing is changing some of our processes a little bit. Instead of the office sometimes chasing these county approvals, in the future, we will let the permit ease know that they need to bring us something similar to a good standing or whatever, a letter from the counties, just making sure we have, we're not missing anything in those approvals. So just, again, it's communication. I believe Albany County and I believe Natrona County is doing some changes on their county approvals and we'll keep monitoring that and let you know as those come in. So that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Charlie on that last item? I have one for you, Charlie. Will that extend down to the municipal level on any of that? Or is that strictly at the county level?
You know, I can't necessarily answer that other than whenever we do get an application, the agents are are contacting city and county officials to make sure that they're, A, aware that an OTB is coming in, but just to communicate. And we're periodically communicating with those city and county officials in our inspections. And one of the routine things when we go to a town or a city, we are also stopping in to local police department, sheriff's department, and just saying hi. At least that's the plan a lot of times. So.
Does this affect the game of skill any, Charlie?
At this point, I think not. But we'll see how things move forward.
Okay, sounds good. With that, are there any other questions for Charlie? And let's proceed to item number five, the General Discussion.
Yes, item number five, A, just general discussion. Commissioners, I'm not sure if you got this update or not. But I do have this, we can open this up. The first one, if you did get my update, the first one I just had, and these are just ideas, responsible growth in gambling. The next one was what is the saturation level in the state of Wyoming for gaming? And these are general type topics. Also, live racing, what's the relationship between the expansion or the wagering? the expansion or the wagering activity versus live racing, keeping live racing, you know, as a focus? And then finally, problem gambling and problem gambling is uh, probably, if you don't mind, I'd like to touch on first. And I do have, I don't see him now, is Mr. Willard?
He's there. Patrick?
Yes, President Davis.
Oh, there he is. If I could just kind of set this up real quick, Patrick, I'd appreciate it. Um, Commissioners and anyone joining us today, we're very fortunate to have Patrick Willard. He is from the National Council on Problem Gambling. He is one of their senior, uh, the Director of Policy and Advocacy with us today and I really appreciate it. I contacted him regretfully yesterday and asked him to be a part of this meeting today. And uh, thank you very much, Patrick. Uh, I'll turn it over to you for some comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Davis and, and I'm happy to be joining you in, in Wyoming from here in the uh, in, in Virginia. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person with you. I, I've enjoyed my times in Wyoming and so um, I'm pleased to be speaking to you. Um, as, as uh, Director Moore said, I am with the National Council on Problem Gambling. We represent the seven million plus uh, people, including about eight thousand, an estimated eight thousand eight hundred in Wyoming. Uh, with problem, with problems with gambling. Uh, our organization, the National Council on Problem Gambling, is neutral on gambling. We are not for it, we are not against it. We understand that people are going to be using some of their time for entertainment gambling and so we don't take a position on gambling itself. What we do believe is that it's important to be uh, aware that sometimes people have gambling addictions and that this is something that has been identified as an addiction by the American Psychiatric Association. I'm happy to appear before you this month because this is Problem Gambling Awareness Month all across the country. This is the time when we focus on the fact that we need to increase awareness about gambling addictions. Think about how we're going to provide treatment services and encourage healthcare providers to actually do screening so they can determine if a person has a gambling addiction or gambling problems. Um, at the National Council, we have a national health line that operates 24/7 and is confidential for people. From Wyoming, we have gotten over forty-three hundred calls over the last five years. That breaks down to about eight hundred and sixty a year. Um, the numbers went down during the COVID pandemic, but, but in general, uh, it's about eight hundred and sixty, nearly nine hundred a year. Obviously, we have been paying a lot of attention to what's been going on across the country in terms of sports betting. And one of the things that we've been encouraging states to do when they think about sports wagering or sports betting is to set aside at least one percent of the revenue so that it will go to problem gambling services. I know that the legislation that has been before the Wyoming House includes three hundred thousand dollars that would go for problem gambling services. And so we're, we're happy to see that the state is recognizing problem gambling and setting aside funding for that. Um, the other thing that we believe is that, that there should be flexibility in the law itself. Obviously, the commission is going to be responsible for the rules and regulations of this new sport, sports betting, this online betting that's going to be going on in Wyoming. And we think that you need the flexibility to be able to set responsible gaming rules for people. Uh, there was the discussion about, uh, you know, the age limits for people uh, on, on video games. Obviously, you're going to have that sort of a situation when it comes to online uh, betting. And so we think that there needs to be flexibility for the commission to be able to set in place rules and regulations that encourage responsible gambling, responsible gaming going forward. So with that, again, I appreciate you having me uh, here today. Uh, I'm pleased to remind you that this is Responsible Gambling Awareness Month and I hope that you will take the opportunity to make others aware of that and your role in encouraging people to, to um, when they're doing this, to keep in mind problem gamblers and also to keep in mind how to gamble responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, are there any questions from the commission? I have one for you, Patrick. You alluded to the rules and regulation-making process here. Are you guys available for advisement on this, you know?
We are. In fact, we, we've put together some responsible uh, gaming um, uh, principles that we are happy to be able to provide. That includes everything from helping people think about the training that needs to be provided in these areas as well as um, you know, some of, some of the regulations that, that should go in place and we're happy to help out with that uh, in any way we can.
Would that mean you'd have to make a road trip to Wyoming?
That'd be great. I'd be happy to be there.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Patrick at this time?
Uh, Mr. President, this is Commissioner, Commissioner Pacheco.
Go ahead, Duane.
Yes, but uh, Mr. Willard, um, I had the pleasure of calling the hotline last night. Not because I'm a problem gambler, but just to see how the system worked. And um, uh, it's, it was, it was interesting. The lady I spoke with was very nice and I was asking her some questions, of course she couldn't answer. But um, so you, you, the first question I have, is this a nonprofit uh, organization?
Yes, the National Council is a nonprofit organization. We receive no federal funding of any kind. Um, uh, it's all uh, nonprofit operations. Uh, we have um, affiliates in about thirty-three of the states out there. The, the national hotline operates in every state. Um, and what we do is we, we can then send the calls to people who are uh, counselors and, and, and treatment agencies that can then take care of the calls.
Thank you. And then the second thing was, being from Wyoming, there is not a lot of resources. And that was evident last night when I spoke to the young lady. Um, but she did give some uh, good uh, direction as far as uh, websites and even some online um, groups, if you will, the, for um, discussions. So, um, do you find that challenging with a rural state like ours as far as getting resources?
Yeah, we, we do find it difficult in terms of, you know, we, there's training that's provided for, for gambling counselors, specifically gambling counselors and, and, and one of the members of our Wyoming uh, Council on Problem Gambling, Adelaide Wilson, is uh, someone who has been certified in that practice and, and provides those. I think that uh, I was looking at something last night that said that I think we have eight counselors that are in the state of Wyoming. So obviously, there's a problem in terms of resources. The other thing is in making sure that um, that, that agencies, uh, you know, are providing that funding for that service. Because what we find is sometimes people will call a suicide hotline with a gambling problem and, and they won't be recognized as a uh, gambling situation. It'll be recognized as, as some other sort of situation. And so we're trying to figure out ways to actually make, do a better job of connecting whether it's substance abuse or, or other issues with the problem gambling because all of those things tend to come together. And if we can package it in a way uh, that increases the availability of um, of treatment services, mental health services for people that need it, we think that's the, the right road to go down.
You said something that struck me and that, that has to do with suicide. We have a very high rate per capita of suicide. I, I believe we may lead the nation, uh, but. So, is that data ever extrapolated as far as uh, it's gambling? Uh, when, when you have a suicidal subject, is there any of that data available?
There is data, yes. I, I don't know of, of data that's specific to Wyoming. I do know that we have done data on problem gamblers and suicide and there is a very high suicide rate among those people that, that are categorized as problem gamblers. And it's, it's higher than for other substances.
Thank you. That, that's very interesting. I, I appreciate it.
Happy to help.
Uh, Commissioner Wildcat, is there, um, how do you guys educate uh, along these lines? Since you've got a lot more experience than we do.
We actually, um, we actually have a involuntary exclusion program down here that the Gaming Commission runs. So they, they come in and they involuntarily exclude themselves if they find that they have a gambling problem. Initially, when we first began, we had created the Wyoming Council on Compulsive Gambling. Um, we didn't get a lot of, we were having issues there because of the, the counselors and those that were needing to be certified, had a lot of hoops to jump through and it was pretty costly for them and they had to put in a lot of time. So that kind of, that project kind of, um, it's, it's still on pause and it's been on pause for quite some time just because of the, we need the resources and in Wyoming, they, they weren't available at the time. Um, so we, we do recognize if, if they do come in, if they recognize they have an issue and they do the self-exclusions, then we take them off of, uh, we don't send them any marketing materials. Uh, their pictures are posted uh, with our security so the security can escort them out and um, that type of thing. And if they volunteer, or if they want to come off the exclusion list, they've got to write a letter and they write a letter to our commission here. They've got to sit for a few days. Then come in and meet with the Commissioners because more than likely, those ones that self-exclude themselves will change their mind. It's just a, a decision at the time that they want to do it. But when they have to think about it for those few days, then more than likely, they're going to go ahead and stay on that self-exclusion list. But um, problem gambling is an issue here in Wyoming. Um, we have had some folks that have lost everywhere from their entire farm, their houses, their families. Um, we do need more resources here within the state.
Is, is there a way that we can help each other out with your knowledge on this and the Gaming Commission? And Pat's knowledge to maybe get something going and educate our gamblers? Since we're kind of in the infancy age of this.
Oh, oh, President Davis, and I don't know if, um, Charlie can speak more to this, but, and I, I don't know about, I know the lottery has the um, Wyoming Responsible Gambling Coalition. And I know we were listed as a member on there, but I don't, I haven't, since I've been on the commission here, I haven't heard any, of any involvement. So maybe Charlie can expand on that.
Yes, thank you. Yes, the, the lottery has been very active in this, um, with the, the posters and the different uh, uh, things that have been out across the state. Um, they also are, are donating um, some of their funding to the problem gambling. But then there's also another group that I was originally a part of here in the state and then it, it appeared to me that it was a little bit of a conflict of interest, so I asked to, to, to get off of it. But as far as what the office is doing on problem gambling, we have, as I'm showing you right now on the screen, we have flyers that we've put in the OTBs, um, we offer these as well to the skill-based amusement game vendors to have these out there um, in their different locations. We also um, have had each one of the permates um, in their, their advertising and different things, know, have the uh, problem gambling hotline number. Um, it's also on our website and it's also um, in all of our packets that we produce here in the office. Our annual report has uh, at the back page of it, problem gambling, your packets you received this week should have had, had that in there as well. So we're, we're to do a little bit of the grassroots, kind of, kind of a, a push on this. And the other thing that we offer and I currently have the, the CD out to um, Wyoming Amusement, I believe, uh, we have the, the um, oh gee, shoot, it's uh, it's similar to uh, the, the alcohol training for bartenders, but it's for gambling and uh, program. And we've, we've also had the OTB managers have looked at those and we per, periodically circulate that CD. And uh, so, you know, we are doing quite a bit. Can we do more? Heck yeah, we can always do more and and I'm just really pleased that, that uh, we were able to get, connect with Patrick here today. And also I'll have to admit, um, thank you to Jenny, uh, Commissioner Wildcat. She's the one that uh, had uh, kind of refreshed my memory on, on problem gambling. And the program that, that we have is, it's the online and the gambling tips program. So, and we require the management of the OTBs to go through that program, so.
Yeah, are there any other questions for Patrick at this time?
Um, President Davis?
Go ahead, Randy.
Is, I mean, you brought it, you brought it up, Charlie, you know, the alcohol situation. Um, is there an active Gamblers Anonymous Association here or groups that are sponsored here in the state at all? Maybe Patrick could know or maybe um, Charlie would know?
I can't answer that.
I know that, I know that those, those things do exist in different places.
I think Pat.
I just didn't know if we had it in Wyoming.
Himself, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, um, I don't have that information. I know that um, I know that there, there are the, the counseling programs, there are those few counseling programs that are in Wyoming. And whether those also have a gambling anonymous piece to them, I'm not sure of.
We do have one here at a, at a local church that meets uh, periodically.
And President Davis, um, I just want to suggest something maybe to Charlie and the staff. Here in Crook County, we have a Be Well Coalition, okay? And that is um, run by the County Health Department, the Public Health Department. Their main focus, since my wife and I have been on it and we participate and it's once monthly. Uh, their main focus has been vaping and smoking and um, drug use and alcohol use among teenagers as well as other people. Um, and that, um, it just hit me while we were discussing this. Since we're involved in that, we could put something on the agenda where it could be talked about because it's members of the, members of the Sheriff's Department, members of the public health. And I believe every county in the state of Wyoming has one of these Be Well Coalitions that meets periodically. And it might be something that we want to put our toe in the water with and try to go ahead and work with that, work with that group. Um, one of the other things that they're very, very uh, active in and want to is the now for Commissioner Pacheco, is the suicide situation and they are very, very concerned and active in trying to go ahead and reduce that number because it's almost at epidemic levels here in the state of Wyoming.
Yeah, President, Commissioner Lightning. We have Sweetwater Prevention as well and we're using those prevention dollars uh, for suicide, tobacco, alcohol, all of the big ones. And it's just that, that, that correlation between gambling and suicide, actually, I, I think you're spot on and it is something that uh, our prevention people, I believe they would, they would definitely embrace it and and we've had discussions, uh, I've had discussions with our local prevention people on it.
Uh, President Davis and Commissioner Pacheco, I know that there's that there are, through the Public Health Department, there are active programs out there that are trying to deal with this. And uh, if we could, you know, I'll, I'll bring it up at the next one that we, you know, I'll state. Um, I'll state that I'm a member of the Gaming Commission and say, you know, uh, would you like to get involved with this? Because it is, and that, and that struck me just like I did you, Commissioner Pacheco. The, the correlation between suicide and gambling is just that I'd never heard that before and it really kind of jarred me. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. Looks like there, we have work to do and if we can help out, uh, as far as the commission, I think we should do our best to help educate our gamblers, our public, basically.
Uh, President Davis, if I may real quick, um, if we could get, uh, Charlie, if you could maybe get with uh, the Lottery Corp too and find out what other resources are there. That way we're not reinventing the wheel. And we can do some type of a collaborative effort with this and if Patrick's got any other recommendations also. I think education is the key here, um, as was mentioned before. But um, if we've got, if there's other resources out there and then maybe we can find out what else is available.
Very good, very good. There any more questions on this? Discussion?
Well, I think if, if you don't mind, President Davis, um, you and I have had a few discussions on. You and I have had a few discussions on this. I think we're going to try to have. Um, some education pieces at each one of our meetings, try to do more and more of this, um. We've done it with, uh, Ed Martin coming on and explaining the, uh. Um, the federal bills and different things. And so this is a great opportunity, um. Keep continuing to expand on our education and, and different things. And again, thank you very much, Patrick, for being a part of this meeting today and thanks for the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, President Davis.
Thank you very much. With that, Charlie, I guess this general discussion. You know, each one of us commissioners represents an area. And, uh, what are you guys hearing? Any feedback on this responsible growth of the gaming in the state of Wyoming? What, what are you hearing or? Is anybody hearing anything? What about the saturation level? Have we reached that or are we getting close or? Does Dr. Barry have one in the vet barn out there or? Hey, how about the live racing in relationship to the wagering activity? Brandy, will you have any comment on that?
We've got Eugene with his hand up, sir.
Oh, I don't see Eugene at all. I just see a blank square. Oh, there he is.
Thank you, President Davis. I've, I've been called a blank square before, so I'm, I'm not offended by that. So. Um, just a couple of, uh, comments on, uh, the discussion. First, first of all, on, on problem gambling. Um, just so everybody knows is that, you know, the commission has taken the lead on this, uh, with the operators and, um. You know, when Charlie held up that brochure, that was produced by them, we, we have it at all, all of our locations, but. I certainly believe that as an industry, we, we can do more. Um, there's, there's no doubt about it and it's, uh. Uh, I'm, I welcome, uh, you know, this on the agenda for discussion because I, I, I really do believe it's something that. As we grow, um, it's something we have to a- address collectively. Um, and so. Rolling into, you know, re- responsible growth, um, and the other, uh, issues. Um, well, let me just backtrack a little bit. Live racing and the wagering activity. And so there's been a tremendous amount of discussion about the number of live race days. And growing the industry and, and growing the number of live, live race days. And there's a lot of components that go into live racing. It's just not, uh, the number of days. And I will tell you that as a horse owner, um, I'm, I'm interested. And again, this goes back to the first time I be, uh, put, uh, was in front of, uh. The commission back in 2011, when, when I came back into Wyoming to, to, to start my business operation and I. I said at that time, I'd like the discussion to go from race days to racing opportunities and purse money. And as a horse owner, you're lucky to get six or seven outs, uh, during the sum, summer for, for your particular, and that's a lot. I mean, I. I had four horses in training this year and I, the most, the, the most, uh, outs for one horse was just four. And so, um, every time you run, you want to make sure that you, you're running for the, uh. Biggest pots you possibly can. And so what dictates race days. Has a lot to do with our weather, has a lot to do with the calendar, has a lot to do with the, uh. Availability of horses to fill those, those races. Um, but the, the driver, the driver for all of that, I believe is purse money. Without the proper purse money, if you double the, the number of race days, um, the, the average daily. Uh, or race purse is going to drop. It's not going to increase. And we've seen tremendous increases. Uh, in those purses, uh, over the last several years. And so, um, I know that we've been criticized about the number of race days, but, um, the reality is. You know, the breeding program takes a little bit of time to get up to speed and we're starting to see it. We're starting to see dramatic. Increases and, um, the, the increase in the number of Wyoming bred races in a particular given day. I. I believe in the next three, three or five years, Wyoming bred races will be, you know, at least half of our races here in Wyoming. Which is a, a good thing. Um, so going back to, uh, rapid growth. Uh, or responsible growth, excuse me, rapid growth is, is kind of a part of it. Um. And, and I would tell you that, um, and, and again, touching on saturation. There is a tremendous room for growth right now. Um, we believe that the markets, um, are going to grow this year. You know, by thirty percent or more. I think in the next three to five years, we could, um, maybe double that. Um, and, um, the one thing about, uh. The way the paramutual industry was originally set up. Was that in order to participate, there had to be a vote of the people in the county. But on top of that, there's also a local control and that, and that is on the county commissioners. So if a county, you know, doesn't want this activity. Currently, even though back in the seventies, they voted for paramutual, there is that local control. And this was an issue that was brought up with Senator Schiffer and, um. Uh, Governor Mead at the time when we were first running House Bill twenty-five. Because the original paramutual statutes did not anticipate historic horse racing. But they were wise enough again to put in that local control that if they, the county didn't want that activity. They could certainly not approve it. So, um, you know, we as operators, um, you know. I have to work with the local municipalities and the, and the, and the counties. Um, whenever we are coming in to, to open up and have that discussion, uh, so that we. Fully engage, uh, all the issues, uh, that are going to be part of our business activity. Um, it. There, 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 the new permittee, um, has brought up a couple of times that they feel that. The, uh, business levels or the wagering activity is, is a saturated market. And so they, they have a theory that they want to divvy up the pie and put in protections for a new racetrack operator because. They're not going to be able to afford to compete with the other two operators. And again, um. I, I, I totally disagree with that. I mean, I, I, I'd be interested to know how they came up with this or who's been consulting with them. Because it is something that I don't believe is true. I believe that. Every time, and historically you can prove, every time we open up an OTB, the overall market grows. Um, and so, you know, we're going to have a, we're going to go from four to five OTBs in the, in the Trona. County and I, I, I promise you, the old, the, the overall amount of money going to Natrona County and Casper or whatever. Is going to grow. So again, I, I mean. I'd be interested to hear from three oh seven, their, their, their thoughts on the, the saturation, uh, level. Uh, with that, I'm happy to take any questions, President Davis.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Eugene on this?
Uh, Mr. President, I do for Eugene.
Go ahead.
Eugene, what, what's the percentage, i- i- just off the top of your head, that has to be precise. Of the live horse racing to the historic horse racing gaming, uh, that, that your business does. Can you give us a percentage on what that is?
Is it on gross dollars or, uh?
Sure.
Okay, I, you know, um. You know, and I was just, I was just looking at these numbers, um, in Campbell County, for instance, okay? So we've operated, and so this is a, a kind of a snapshot of just one geographic area. We've operated OTBs there for six years. We raced live there for five years, okay? In the, in the first three years we were there and during those years, um, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. Um, we as a company overall in the state did not make money because we were investing money. Into growth and terminals and, and what have you. We didn't start to make money, uh, until twenty eighteen. So. The overall profits for our OTB operation in Campbell County for tho- those three years. Uh, eighteen, nineteen and twenty, um, to the, its impact to our bottom line was about one point eight million dollars. Okay, what we spent on live horse racing. In Campbell County for those five years was over three point three million dollars. Now. The engine is revving now and, and, and we're growing and so, you know, to. Those who much is given, much is expected. And, and what I anticipate. Uh, our increased revenues driving is that those purse monies, our purses this year. Um, are going to be over a million dollars. Um, and so. You know, once, once you kind of reach break even, a lot of money kind of falls to the bottom line, but. The, the beneficiaries of that, um, are going to be the, the, the horsemen. But as far as live racing, it is a loss leader for us. We do not make money on it. Um, I would say at best, just from my experience, running Wyoming Downs for ten years. That it's, it's still less than break even for them. They're, they're, get a lot closer than I do. Um, and so it's, it's kind of an expense. As far as the, the wagering on, on that, it's. You know, maybe I think we do, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars a day in gross handle. And we do, I think a thousand times that amount in the course of the year on historic hor- horse racing. I, I don't know if that answers your, uh, question, Commissioner Pacheco, but.
But that really does answer my question and, and so my comment to that would be. We put a large percentage of this commission's time and effort into the live horse racing. But a thousand to one, um. Are we putting, and I guess I would pose this question, it's probably not to you, Eugene, but to the commission. Is our energy, uh, being properly, um, distributed? On the gaming industry and what we've been tasked with. Charlie, I guess that's just a broad statement to make, but I mean, we're under general discussion and, and so I would like to throw that out there.
I think he's got that deer in the headlights look.
I mean, I, I, I can take a shot at the answer, uh, President Davis, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question for me?
Yeah, if your name is Charlie.
Apologize. I would pa- apologize for that.
I mean, my, my one comment, President Davis, would be that, um, you know, the comments been made, uh. By, by certain parties that, oh, we're, we're putting the cart before the horse. The reality is. Gambling has always fueled, uh, live horse racing since its inception. I mean, hundreds and hundreds of years ago. With, without the, the wagering on it, you don't have the revenue to support the purse structure. For the horses to run and the operators to operate, um, the racetrack. And back in the, the eighties, when we passed simulcast. Um, it was to help subsidize the expenses of live horse racing. And now we have historic horse racing, which again is meant to. Subsidize, fuel the growth of, of the horse racing. It, it, we, we are an agribusiness at a, at our core. Um, and so the, the benefit to the state. I would tell you is that from an industry that was dead, uh, just ten, ten short years ago. Our, our economic impact on the state as of twenty eighteen, and I'm sure it's grown since then. Is sixty-five million dollars, uh, plus. I mean, Charlie mentioned the, the breeder up in, uh, Afton, Wyoming. Um, that you, the, the money flowing to the breed fund is certainly accelerating. Um, the, uh, the breeding industry. I, I, I can cite you a dozen examples of people purchasing property. Horse property here in Wyoming to come and breed their horses here. Um, again, the purse money to the horse, horses that are running here has, has drawn, uh, horses from. Far away as California and Canada to, um, New Mexico, Colorado, you name it, Nebraska. All coming to look for racing opportunities here. So, um. I, the, I think that my personal opinion is, I, I think the gaming commission has the proper balance. They, they. And again, we started out as the paramutual, uh, commission and it is a, um. It is a, uh, you know, sacred duty to protect the, um. The health and safety of, um, the participants in our sport, but without that, without that, I guess. Economic bargain with the state, uh, of Wyoming that we will promote this agribusiness. If you allow us to have, uh, the ability to take in these wagering dollars. And I think we've lived up to it. I, I know that every promise we made at the legislature back in twenty thirteen. Uh, as an industry, we have lived up to those words. Um, so. It's, it's, it's a balancing act and, and now you, the challenge, my opinion, again, Director Moore, I'll let you answer. Cause you've lived it on a daily basis, is that more and more of their time is, 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 is tied up in. The regulation of the wagering activity. And so, um. You know, he's ramping up on staffing and what have you, but it's kind of a new day and age and, uh. With that, I'll, I'll throw it over to, uh, Director Mark or President Davis, uh. Hope I haven't filibustered too much, Charlie.
Charlie, you have some comments on this for?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, President Davis. Um. You know, we, we do spend a tremendous amount of time in the summer and expenses on the live racing aspect of it. But we're more and more being focused, uh, you know, the rest, the remainder of the year and during those times the races are running. You know, the, the, we are focused, the major focus is the wagering activities. So I'm not sure I exactly, um, answered your question or, or helped you. Um, at the time you asked the question, I was trying to make sure we had public. Um, able to get into the meeting, so I was a bit distracted and I do apologize.
Well, I think what we see, uh, Dwayne, is the overall, uh. Economic values that are generated because of the horses. Through a different avenue and also because of the wagering that supports that avenue. I mean, with the expansion of the breeding. Uh, the, the dollars that the industry. Uh, generates, you know, as, as Eugene. Pointed out the sixty-five million dollars. I mean, that's from the, the feed store to the guy that's selling them the hay to the. The young man that comes and helps shovel out the stables. I mean, it's, it's amazing what the, uh, trickle down economics. Off of live horse racing can be. I mean, look at the, uh, the motel opportunities in Gillette during those weekends and. And Evanston and Rock Springs, you know, where these live races are taking place, you know, if we can expand that back to the original. Um, where you see it at the, the county fairs, you know, and things like that. I, it used to. From my experience, used to bring out a lot of people to the county fairs just to go see the races. For those two days or whatever it was that weekend. And, and the dollars amount actually wagered at those. County fairs was very minimal, you know, but compared to the overall. Experience and the economic factor that was achieved from that was, it's just beyond me.
President Davis, we have another hand up for Mr. Jack Greer, Greer's Seven Horse Racing.
Okay, if you get him in there then, I don't see him anywhere, but go for it. Nick, Jack, you have the floor.
He is connected now.
Okay, go ahead, Jack. You're muted. I mute you there.
I was hitting the button. President Davis, Commission, can everybody hear me today?
Yep.
Good, thank you for your time. I'm happy to join the meeting today. I, I wanted to, to get on this discussion, uh. Beans that, uh, three oh seven's name had got brought up and I think there's just some, some discussion points that I would like to touch on as well. Um, and, and to President Davis's point, you know, uh. Obviously, three oh seven and, and Governor Mead and, and, and our group has, has made some points to the commission. Now thus far, that, uh, you know, obviously has obtained some opposition from the other operators and I just. I would like to tip my hat to Eugene and in his, his speech today, uh, you know, and, and what it takes to actually put on a live horse race and be a live racetrack. Operator. And, and that is, you know, all that three oh seven horse racing has been trying to do here, um. You know, the, the, the original intent of the legislation and, and way that this was all drafted was, was for that sole purpose. Uh, to, to protect live racetrack operators and, and to incentivize live horse racing. And as, as President Davis has mentioned, you know, there, there's a whole nother industry, a, a large industry associated with live racing and, um. You know, three oh seven by no means is saying. you know, 307 by no means is saying that the state is ultimately saturated with OTBs and machines. But, but we are trying to say that, you know, the, the 100 mile statute that now has been sponsored to be deleted, you know, that, that was put in place to, to, to protect live racetracks and live racetrack operators. I just would, would like to make it clear that obviously there's going to be opposition to that. The other operators do, do have, you know, possibly money to lose there. If enforced correctly, there obviously is the, the written approval or written permission clause within that statute that we would be happy to work with the other operators on. And I, I just, I guess I'll stand for any questions, but I, I just don't want 307 to, to, to come off like we're really trying to come in here and disrupt the whole thing. We're just ultimately trying to enforce these rules and statutes as they were originally intended and, and really excited about joining the other operators and, and putting on live horse racing and also joining the other operators, operators and, and, and the machines and these OTBs and the simulcasting that is what funds the live horse racing. All of this goes hand in hand and, and we look forward to all that stuff. So with that, I'll stand with any questions or thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Is there any questions from the commissioners at this time? Well, hearing none, Jack. I think you got all that one pretty good. Oh, there it is. Go ahead.
I, I, I don't have a question. I don't have a question for Jack. You asked for a comment from me about how I felt about the saturation of gambling in general in the state of Wyoming, where they're reaching a saturation point. I know there's concern out there. A former commissioner to the Paramutual Commission lives in the county in Virginia Shafstall. And she has expressed the concern about the games of skill, the lottery when it came in, all of these different things. When are, you know, when are, when are, when are we going to saturate the amount of dollars that are being spent on gambling? And she's concerned about that because after all, we only have, we, we have a small state population wise, and the amount of money that's being spent between games of skill, between the lottery, between paramutual OTBs and paramutual racing. She's concerned about the saturation, whether we're, you know, whether that, that saturation is, whether we've reached that saturation point. And I've had several discussions with her about that. I've also had discussions with my local county attorney. And he's concerned about how much gambling now is going on with the different laws and things like that. And he's concerned somewhat about the potential for nefarious acts in all of the different gambling that's going on. Nothing's been, you know, nothing has happened. And they think that the, they, their comments are, is that to me, as a commissioner, as a gaming commissioner, they're a little concerned and Commissioner Pacheco brought this up. Trust me, when I got on this commission seven years ago, we were in infancy as far as HHRs were concerned. We were in the infancy of almost everything. And the unbelievable and phenomenal growth in the amount of dollars being spent on gambling in this state is almost, it, it, it's hard to comprehend. And there are people out there in the state. I mean, the legislature passes the laws and we have to go ahead and try to enforce them, but it's getting to be a monumental task for both our staff as, and as well as the commissioners. So I just, you asked if I've heard any comments? Yes, I have.
Okay, duly noted. I do have a, a question for Jenny. Commissioner Walcott, are you seeing, what are you seeing growth predictions for where you're at? You know? Is it flat lined or is it still on the way up? Or, you know, COVID took a big dive, but opportunities there.
President Davis, that's really tough to even say right now. Just because we're trying to bounce back from COVID. It, it hit our, it hit our people a lot harder with the deaths, deaths in our community. So we are taking a lot more precautions here going forth. We're just focusing on our sports betting right now. But at this point in time, that would even be tough to gauge too.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this open discussion?
President Davis, we have another hand up by Mr. Franklin, Wyoming Downs.
Okay, we don't see him, but put him on.
He's coming over right now.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Holy moly, there he is. You have the floor, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. President, member of the commission. I just, very quickly, I just wanted to point out one thing that, that was part of this discussion was race days and the, the correlation between race days and historic racing. I can't give, give you the percentages that, that were asked for earlier, but I can tell you that, you know, Wyoming Downs is running 18 days this, this season, up from 14 last year, which we did in a COVID year. And we're running 18 days for the first time in, as near as I can figure, 20 or so years. And I think that's, that's an amazing thing and shows the growth of live racing. And, and to echo Eugene's point earlier, it's live racing with good purses. So we didn't want to start expanding race days before we had money to keep the purses up. So that's kind of where we're at with them. Our purses are going to be a little, a little better than last year with more racing days. And so, good purses, more racing opportunities. Our plan is to, to take a serious look at maybe adding a couple more days next year. We, and I think we'll find out where that, where that, I, I don't want to call it a saturation point for live racing, but where that balance is that we can, we can have as many race days and as many racing opportunities as possible and, and, and not, not overdo it. So with that, Mr. President, I stand for questions.
Are there any questions for Frank at this time from the commission? Well, hearing none, Frank. Up. I heard something. Somebody just babbled. With that, I think we could probably, at this point, try to end this open discussion and continue down our business here. And I thank everybody for participating.
President Davis, is there anything from either Matt Pascal or Leslie George? They're both on there. They haven't raised their hands, so maybe they don't, they're not going to jump in. Did they have any comments?
Uh, Matt just jumped in. Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, President Davis, commissioners. I just wanted to, you know, talk about the, I think, coming up for approval later is the, is the fort, which is one of the locations that Wyoming Downs is looking at doing a mini site. Just wanted everybody to know that we, one of our vendors does have skill games in that location and does have an exclusive contract for those skill games. So just, just wanted to put that out there for you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Oh, duly noted. Thank you, Matt.
You bet.
There any other information anybody would like to change or put out? Do we have any open vet clinic with Dr. Barry anywhere time soon? No? Okay, with that, Charlie, I guess we can proceed down the list here to item number six.
President Davis, would you want to entertain maybe a 10 minute break?
Do you need to pause for the cause, sir?
Well, not really, but oh, we got a thumbs up here.
Okay. One thumb counts. We'll all take a break for 10 minutes.
Okay, we'll resume at 10 after 11.
All right, mighty fine.
Turning off your cameras in mute. Nick, you can do whatever you need to do.
Okay, President Davis, just so you're aware, I'm going to reorganize this room and get people for item number six in here and then if other people need to, they can raise their hands from the waiting room.
All right, I'm good.
Commissioners, we're still waiting on Commissioner Davis. For some reason, we're having some technical difficulty. Oh, there's Bob. There you are. You're still muted.
Oh, somebody muted me there. Oh, I guess there's a lot of mutes around here. Remember, a long time ago, I took the kids to see the Teenage Muted Ninja Turtles. All right. With that, Charlie, I guess we're ready to resume. Item number six, Wyoming Horse Racing LLC. If everybody's back in.
Quick roll call.
Please.
President Davis.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Wildcat. Thank you. Commissioner Pacheco. He's here. Thank you. Commissioner Lyndon is here. Commissioner, Dr. Barry, you're here. Commissioner Dagel, I see. And Vice, yeah, Vice President Broussard, are you still on the call?
President Davis, Director Moore, he is not.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the ski slope, so he may have not gotten back in yet. And then we have new Commissioner on the call as well.
Catfish.
And please, Commissioner Cavell, please don't be afraid to jump in and ask questions. If you've got anything today, you're more than welcome to. Item number, we have a forum, President Davis, item number six. A Wyoming Horse Racing LLC, a request received January 28th, 21 for the Exacta tote system update consisting of one new wagering profile, 11 VAC 10 hyphen 47, an IGT product, and one new associated game theme. I think I would turn this over for any explanations of the product to Mr. Joyce or to Exacta.
Eugene, you're up the floor.
Thank you, President Davis. On the, on the call of this today is Catherine Paisley. She's the Chief Legal Counsel for Exacta Systems. I know she does a lot more than just being the legal eagle for them, too. And also is Jeremy Stein, the President of Exacta Systems. And I'll just simply note that Exacta has been working diligently to come up with some new game themes to better serve our customer base. And this is one of them. It's going to be operating on their backbone, their SaaS system, but they can give you a better technical explanation. And with that, I will pass it over to either Jeremy or Catherine, whoever wants to go first.
Yep, this is Jeremy Stein, President Davis, Director Moore. I'll add a little more color to that. Yes, so this new game theme and machine will operate on our same backend system that you've been, that we've been operating for the last several years. It will be using the same triple race method, the same outcome generation, the same totalizer that we've been utilizing, and it will also have the same reporting features. It will be clearly marked as to which themes are coming from which provider. So you'll have full accounting and full reporting that would be associated with each different manufacturer that comes on. And again, part of this is amongst the new games, new machines, and themes that we bring onboard in order to continue to bring diversity and new and engaging products to your jurisdiction. This is one of, the first of a few that we'll be bringing onboard. So that's the high-level kind of overview. If you have any questions or any other commissioners have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Is there any questions from the commissioners at this point? Seeing none. Okay, Eugene, I guess, Charlie, where are we at here now? Do we want to go over the report or the, it looks like?
Yeah, I can go to the staff board if you'd like, Mr. Sir.
The recommendation here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The wagering profile 11 VAC 10 hyphen 47 IGT was reviewed using the 18-point review method. Upon completion of the review process and watching the submitted gameplay submissions, the staff makes the following observation. It has been determined and verified by GLI that the results of the historic horse races compared against the player's selections are the only determining factor in the outcome of players wager. The outcome of the game is entirely determined by the player's picks evaluated against the results of the historic horse race. Additionally, as verified, the player has the opportunity for the exercise of skill or judgment where the outcome is not completely controlled by chance alone. The entertaining display of the game is populated deterministically using only the player's choices and the winning horses in the historical horseshires without any intervening random elements. The submission is consistent with other approvals and appears to be compliant. Staff recommends approval.
President Davis?
Go ahead, Randy.
Um, I would recommend approval of this application for this game theme and for Wyoming Horse Racing LLC.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dick. Then moved and seconded. All in favor, show of hands? Aye. Oh, forgot. Is there any discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? Hey, no discussion? All in favor, show of hands, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Did you get that, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
All right. Looks good. Okay, with that, we're on to item number B on six, item six, number B. A request received. Charlie?
Thank you. Wyoming Horse Racing LLC, item B, six B, excuse me, request received, February 14th, 2021, relocating its operations from 4100 West Yellowstone Highway, Mills, Wyoming, for the Beacon Club, to a new location at 300 West F Street, Casper, Wyoming, the Econo Lodge. The new facility will offer a fully-staffed OTB consisting of simulcasting of live paramutual events and 100 historic horse racing terminals. As you can see in your packets, you have the request letter from Wyoming Horse Racing. You'll also see the map and the proximities of, and if you look there on the lower right-hand corner, you have the Econo Lodge. That's the Interstate 25 running there. And then if you've been, the Ram Codex right there on the corner, and then our offices are just up above of the Ram Codex. So you can get an idea of where this is. This is the area below the event center.
With that being said, are there questions from the commissioners on this? Well, I guess first we need a motion, don't we, Charlie, before we go to discussion?
Also, just, just as an FYI here, I'd like to let everyone know, Neptuna County is changing up some of their county approval methods and their different requirements. So we would, we would add to, if, you know, you've got several opportunities when you're approving anything here from Neptuna County, but it would be always subject to the continual authorization of the Neptuna County Commissioners for the operations of the OTBs, so.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the location swap.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I did have a question, a discussion.
Well, I guess we've got to have a motion first, and then we can go into discussion. Is that correct, Charlie?
Would be correct, yes.
Okay.
We approve the swap.
Then moved by Commissioner Barry, is there a second?
I'll second.
If I could, if we could get an amendment to the motion, it would be approved, the the request, subject to continuing county approval from the Neptuna County Commissioners. Additionally, it would be subject to receiving a final inspection by the WGC staff prior to operation.
Is that what you said, Commissioner Barry?
Yes, that, that'd be fine.
All right. And Carrie, are you all right?
I'm good with that.
Okay, now we can have some discussion. Okay. All right, Chief Pacheco, are you gonna, there we go.
Mr. President, my question is regarding the, keeping those that are not of age out of this hotel. And I'm seeing a lot of entrances, exits, how? I guess I don't know. These are obviously walls. Is this like an offshoot of the hotel? Or is it, can we get some description on it? And can we be assured that there's not going to be underage people in their gaming?
That would, Eugene, go ahead.
Thank you, President Davis, Commissioner Pacheco. There are a lot of doors. What, what it is, it's a converted ballroom. However, there are only two entrances in and out. One is from the outside coming into the, on the, I believe it's the south side or the east side, I think the east side. And the other one is, is entrance coming in the lobby. All the others have crash bars and they are, they are emergency exits. And so that, in order to enter the room, there's, there's only two entry points. Those are both going to be covered by cameras. And again, you know, I, I believe my staff is second to none in making sure that they will be, making sure that underage people do not come in. We have a pretty good track record along those lines. So, and again, we have cameras and we will keep out the underage people coming in and out of that place. But again, we have just two entry points, even though it looks like there's a lot of doors there.
President Davis, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Charlie, you mentioned in the, in the motion, it has to do with Neptuna County. And is that the Neptuna County approval because of their changes and their, in their approval process? And the second part of that question is, is the city changing their approval or is the city already approved this?
President Davis, Commissioner Lyndon, Neptuna County is, has potentially a new resolution that will be on the agenda next week to change to where their approvals are site-specific. I'm not totally clear on where they're going with that exactly, like they are going to site specifics on those. And then as far as the city approvals and, and different things, whenever any of the off-track wagering locations are being opened and proposed, we're contacting local law enforcement. We're, we're contacting the city to make sure that everything, and then also to, of course, whether it's Wyoming Downs, Wyoming Horse Racing, or 307, they have permits that they're required to get in most all, if not every, community at the city level.
Thank you.
And I think Mr. Joyce can expand on that.
Eugene, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Davis. So I'm not, and again, I'll lean on Director Moore as he's the resident of Neptuna County. And this has kind of hit me out of the blue, but we have approvals. We have a signed resolution from the Neptuna County Commissioners giving us blanket approval to operate live horse racing, simulcast, and historic horse racing anywhere in Neptuna County. And that's been in effect for four or five years now. So I, I'm a little taken aback by the conditional approval. They would have to go and reverse that resolution. I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm pretty sure they would have to go back in and reverse that approval. So I don't know what they're considering. Maybe it's going forward, but I would ask the Commission to take that, that off of my, my approval for this site. Again, if, if in fact they are going to go in the, in the future and reverse that resolution and deny my operation, we're going to shut down right away. But I, I, I'm just concerned that this is the first time any site has had that condition on the approval with the Commission. And so I respectfully ask that to be removed as a condition for the approval here.
Charlie, could you address that a little bit, our thinking behind that?
Yes, thank you, President Davis. And, you know, the key word in the motion is subject to continuing county approvals, which that, that is something that you have already. You know, if the county decides anyway, they can, you know, pull, and then you would, you would be off of that. But as much as anything, I think this is a respect to the local municipalities and a thing for them. I don't see this as being any kind of an issue. And you are absolutely correct. You do have a current invalid county approval that is a blanket approval that's been in place for a number of years with Neptuna County.
So with that, do we need to amend the amend, or is, are we good with the motion on the floor right now as it sits?
President Davis, Eric Nelson in Wyoming Downs has raised his hand as well.
Okay. We don't see him, but let him in, I guess.
He is on now. He can unmute himself in.
Go from there.
There we go. President Davis, Commissioners and Director Moore. I would like to comment on the Crown of County. We had been in front of them recently to get a blanket approval, and we had some conversation in regards to it. They asked the different locations, and we decided that between all the parties, that would be best, and they would be much more comfortable if we would identify all the new locations in the future. So that's where they're, they're coming from. They were a little concerned because they felt the skill game individuals, which are good folks, didn't have to come in. They don't know where they're at. And they had talked about finding out where they're at and making those under the same conditions to come in for all the approvals and the bars and truck stops. They're kind of left in the dark a little bit on some of that right now. It's been up in the air. But it was only intended for the future, and, and actually, it's been a good thing because we're working with all the counties to find out exactly what they want. When we're doing presentations here, where we've been trying to inform Nick of where we're at and what's going on. So it's been a very good process. We've been very well-received throughout all the counties, and I just wanted to put that in there so it was kind of clear that it was proactive, and it wasn't a negative thing. The county attorney did contact us and said, hey, we want to work with you guys. We appreciate it. And this was not a reflection that we were discouraged with what's going on, just the opposite. They want to be more involved with us in the paramutual commission. With that being said, I'll turn back to time.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any questions for Eric on that? From the Commission? Seeing no questions, Eric. Thank you. Okay, Charlie, on this, I would suggest, if we're not going to change our, we're good with our. with our, yeah, we're good where we are, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis, if I could maybe suggest an alternative, too, it could be potentially just subject to to verification, maybe, but that's up to you all, whatever you all are comfortable with, just being respectful to the county entities and their authorities. And also, too, just as a as a note, we were, this came to light at about 4:30 yesterday afternoon, and so it is kind of a late, and I apologize to everyone for this, but it did come up yesterday afternoon late.
Eugene, you raised your hand.
Well, I I'm fine with the the motion as is, again, you know, we we consider ourselves a good corporate citizen here in the state and in any county or municipality where we operate, and so if if you feel that you you want to go as is, that's fine, we're we're confident that, you know, we we are approved by Neutrona County to operate, and now that I know of the issue, I will tell you, I will circle back with Neutrona County on this issue to just to double check and to make sure that, you know, everything's above board there.
With that being said, then, Charlie, should we have a roll call vote?
Mr. President.
Yeah, Wayne.
Yes, sir, just one point of clarification, so is is this location in the county, or is it in the municipality of Casper? Does that go to Charlie?
Yeah, thank you, President Davis, Commissioner Pacheco, that's a good question, and and that was, came up in a in a discussion late yesterday as well, that is in the city, yes.
And and Mr. President, with that, if if the city, you know, Commissioners, Council are concerned, I think they should know where these machines are going to be, and I mean, what what if we put them next to a school or something like that, and they don't want them there? If I'm hearing this correctly, they found out after the fact that these were going to be put in this location, is that correct?
I don't believe so, Eugene, could you clear this up a little, please?
Well, first of all, we had to do some remodeling, and so, you know, we we have a licensed building contractor that got permits from the city to do that remodeling, and so the city is aware, and now, maybe it didn't bubble up to the mayor, but we we work through the city departments whenever we we come in there, there is no approval, city approval process for an OTB location in in Casper that I know of, and and again, we 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 keep pretty close contact, I mean, we have a liquor license from the city of Casper, they're well aware of our operations in their city, and so I don't know who at the city wasn't aware what we were doing, but if, you know, at at present, we are conforming to all the ordinances of the the county and the cities within any any place that we currently operate.
And this, Eugene, is the removal of the one from the Beacon Club to a different site, is that correct?
We're moving from the town of, I guess, Mr. President, excuse me, we're moving from the town of Mills to the city of Casper.
Okay.
And I and I will tell you, the city of Casper will be tickled to have that revenue.
Is there any other questions from the Commission on discussion right now?
President Davis, also, and Commissioners, again, as I think I've said earlier, whenever we have a location, Special Agents Larmendy and Steiger are reaching out to county and city quite often during those processes, making sure that everybody is aware of the changes, and so I I feel confident that the city is aware.
With that being said, we have a motion on the floor, without any further discussion, do we have a call for the vote?
I would call for the question.
All right, thank you, Charlie, a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Vice President Broussard, he is absent, Commissioner Dagel.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Linen.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Curra.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildcat.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who's participated. If that should end item number six, is that correct, Charlie, and we'll be going to item number seven, there'll be a pause for a moment while Nick gets the thing switched around for the next agenda here. If you'll let us know when you're ready, Nick.
Yes, sir, I'm moving some people around right now. President Davis, everybody who has signed up to speak on item number seven is now in, anybody in the waiting room, if you raise your hand, if I missed you, I would appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Nick, at this point, we'll proceed to item number seven, Wyoming Downs, number A, request to offer Amesworth Game Technology Historic Racing Systems, Charlie, where are we at?
Thank you, President Davis, seven A is the Amesworth Game Technology System, we considered this at the November meeting, and during the November meeting, the Commissioners wanted to make sure that we have the legal counsel review this, the gaming system, that has been done. As we stated in the original submission, the system was reviewed using, again, the eighteen-point review method that we have, that is in your packet, and something that was brought to my attention when I copied that over, where it says compliant, that means they were compliant in those particular areas, so there was no problem, and I failed to go back through and check those, so I apologize for that, but it's been determined that the results of a story horse races compared against the player's selection are the only determining factor in the outcome of the player's wagers, the outcome of the game is entirely determined by the player's picks evaluated against the results of historical horses, the entertaining display of the game is populated deterministically, as all other games that we offer, and the only, and the players' choices and the winning horses in the story horse races, without any intervening random elements, the staff, the only random element is when they're pulling the race cards, as far as the races are pulled, and that's same with all other historic horse racing systems, the staff and legal counsel has reviewed the wagering system and spent several hours on this, recommends the approval of the operating system, we do need to come back in after, if if they are approved here today, this is just for the wagering system, not games specific. You do have on the call as well, we have representatives from from Amesworth to answer any questions, explain, so Commissioners, I turn it back to you now.
So at this point, Charlie, we'd be looking for a motion to consider this before we go into discussion?
Yes, please.
Is there a motion?
President Davis, Commissioner Linen, I'd make a motion to approve the Amesworth Gaming System as its application from Wyoming Downs LLC.
Is there a? All right, seconded by Sherry, okay, discussion. Now, Mr. Downing, I believe you have the, or who, we have anybody that raising hand for a discussion?
We have Mr. Dorsey on here that can explain the system further, if you'd like him to, from Amesworth.
Mr. Dorsey, would you care to comment?
I can just kind of, President Davis, members of Commission, Executive Director Moore, again, just for the record, Darren Dorsey from Amesworth Game Technology, I'm the Senior Vice President, General Counsel, and Group Compliance Officer, if you recall, just by way of background, we were at the September twenty-fourth agenda at the Ramcota, the last in-person one, and had a demonstration there, and we also appeared, I believe, at the November thirteenth Zoom meeting, and went through is a lot of specifics about the system, and I would just echo and repeat those items from any of those particular comments and technical discussions, and I believe as Executive Director Moore noted, the only thing that was outstanding was that the Attorney General's Office did want to conduct and make sure, and do the necessary legal review under your protocols and practices, and that has now been finalized, so if there aren't any specific discussions, I don't want to belabor it, or, I know you guys' time is very valuable, but just as, we we are excited to come to the historical horse racing market in Wyoming, and our friends at Wyoming Downs, and we will have a lot more themes, game themes, things of that nature that are going to operate on the system in the months to come, but we would just request approval of the system, and we can keep that process moving forward, but I'm here, our outside counsel for Wyoming, which is Neil Tomlinson from the life form of Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, along with Dave Waters, who is our VP of Global Technologies at Amesworth, if we have any specific questions, or if our partners there at Wyoming Downs, I see Mr. Cook and Mr. Nelson are on the call as well.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
President Davis, this Commissioner Linen, just a point of clarification, all we're doing, all we're doing is going ahead and approving the system, when they come back with game themes, et cetera, and everything else like that, we will have to run a GLI report on those as well, and go ahead and approve the individual games, am I understanding that correctly?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? At this time, Charlie, could we have a roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. Vice President Broussard is absent, Commissioner Dagel.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Linen.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Curra.
I think that's aye.
Okay, Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildcat.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, Charlie, I think we have item seven, number B, a request received January first, twenty twenty-one, on the new OTB location at forty-one hundred West Yellowstone in Mills, previously the Beacon Club, right?
Yes, thank you, President Davis, seven B, a request received January first, twenty twenty-one, the new location moving into the previous I'd location, the Beacon by Wyoming Horse Racing, it's a fully staffed facility, consisting of sixty-seven HHR terminals and simulcast wagering, Wyoming Downs is permitted to offer live racing and simulcasting of paramutual events in Wyoming for twenty-one, simulcast historic racing in satellite locations across the state, Wyoming Downs is currently in good standing with the Gaming Commission and holds county approvals, all of submitted information is accurate and provides provides a detailed plan of operation, et cetera, and camera locations, request is consistent with submissions and appears to be compliant, the staff does recommend approval, this approval would be very similar to the language, if you do want to go ahead and approve it, Commissioners, subject to receiving the county, continuing county approval of Neutrona County and the Wyoming Gaming Commission final staff inspection.
So we are looking for a motion?
Point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Does the town of Mills have to approve this also?
No, the the town does not.
Okay.
Other than if they have any any building permits or anything like that's required.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you.
Who was the second?
I believe it was Randy. Any further discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, is there any public input? Seeing no hands raised there, neither, Charlie, I guess we can have a roll call vote.
Is there any comments from the permatees, anyone else there, just kind of double checking?
I don't see anybody's hands up or anything, Nick, is anybody raising the flag?
President Davis, that's, no, sir.
Okay, with that, Charlie, it doesn't seem to be any other comment, we can go with the roll call.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildcat.
Aye.
Thank you, I woke you up, didn't I?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Curra.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Linen.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dagel.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Broussard is absent, and President Davis.
Aye.
And just a clarification, you weren't asleep, I just thought I'd change it up a little bit.
Okay, with that, now that we got everybody's attention, Charlie, let's go to item number seven, C, a request received February fifth for a new OTB location in Green River, Wyoming.
Thank you, President Davis, seven C, like you said, is the new location, which was recently vacated by Wyoming Horse Racing in Green River, Wyoming, the facility will operate, offer a fully staffed OTB consisting of thirty-three terminals and simulcast wagering, Wyoming Downs is permitted to offer live racing and simulcasting of paramutual events in Wyoming for twenty-one, to include simulcasting historic racing at satellite locations across the state, Wyoming Downs is currently in good standing with the Gaming Commission and holds county approval, all of submitted information is accurate and provides detailed plans, you do have a site-specific county approval, you also have a letter of acknowledgement from the city of Green River in your pockets, everything appears to be compliant, and the staff does recommend approving, in Green River, we have a different situation, and we, the approval can be just subject to the Wyoming Gaming Commission inspections.
Okay, with that being said, I would be looking for a motion for item seven C.
So moved.
Then moved by Chief Pacheco, there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Wildcat seconded, any discussion on this site?
Mr. President, Commissioner Pacheco.
Go ahead.
Charlie, why is this one different than the other ones, can you explain that, please?
Yes, President Davis, Commissioner Pacheco, Sweetwater County hasn't had any issues, and we do have a site specific, and and there's been no pending changes in their their county approvals at this time, did that answer your question? Did that answer your question?
Yes, it just, it's confusing because we have letters from the municipality of this one, but the others, we have no communication. It doesn't seem to be consistent and uniform.
Yes, President Davis, Commissioner Pacheco, you know, I agree with you on that. Wyoming Downs sometimes has submitted confirmation from the local municipalities. We've also reached out to the local law enforcement there as well, just like all the other ones. Is, and we are reaching out to them. Some will choose to submit a letter, some choose to not. It just kind of depends from county or city or municipality across the state.
With regards to that, Chief Pacheco, you know, in our guidelines, when we're getting submissions or getting these sites chosen, if we change some of our protocol, that would be involved in that? Is that what you're looking for?
Mr. President, yes, I think it would definitely take out the guesswork, and people like black and white uniformity, and that to me would add clarity for me as a commissioner, and I would, I would really like to see that in the future. Thank you.
Charlie, would that be a problem trying to implement that into our?
President Davis, again, addressing your question, Commissioner Pacheco, in the conversation. That's not an issue. We do have a checklist that we, we send out to the operators, and they do have a lengthy list that they go through, and we can add that. And I think instead of us so much chasing, you know, the, the items, I think if we put a city and county, whether it's a good standing or whether it's acknowledgement, something in there, and then that can be part of the record, I think is always a good thing.
Thank you, Dwayne. I think with that, Charlie, if we can try and implement that into our protocol would be a good deal and show consistency and uniformity throughout the process then, whether it be this county or that county.
Absolutely. We need to be respectful of the municipalities. And, and several years ago, we had a situation in a, in a city to the north where there was some discussion about these same things. So we do make an effort to reach out to them. You know, we have, at different times, the relationships with the communities are, are better in some communities than others, but I, I think that that's a very good idea, and I will pass that information on.
Okay. So right now, we have a motion on the floor, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Seven C.
President Davis, if I may, Mr. Joyce has his hand raised as well when you're ready for comment.
All right. Eugene, I don't see you up there, but come on in.
Sure, with that. Yes, thank you, President Davis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to make the, the point that as an operator, we always try to communicate with the local municipalities going in. There is nothing right now that requires us with the commission to provide proof of contact, I guess, is the only thing I would tell you. The ordinances vary from city to city, as we all know. Green River wanted to have a modicum of control over this and address this early on, and which is why we have city approvals in the city of Green River, and we don't have them in a lot of other places. I will commend the commission staff for reaching out to these. I mean, they do, you know, yeoman's work, checking these things out and approaching local law enforcement and the municipalities. That being said, I, I don't think it's, it's going to be overly burdensome, but but requiring something that's not required by the city, you know, might be problematical. We have to, you know, formally go in front of a city council, or if it's just simply contacting the mayor or discussing it with the city's attorney or what have you. So as you go through this process, I just ask the staff to be cognizant of how things vary from municipality to municipality as we go forward, you know, and opening up new locations, and that's, that's the only comment I would make. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Is there any questions for Eugene? Seeing none then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. With that, Charlie, I believe we're at a, oh, Randy, do you have a, nope. I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Wildcat.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Curra.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Linen.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Barry.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Daigle.
Aye.
Thank you. And Vice President Broussard is absent, and finally, President Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Charlie, I believe we're ready to go to item number, or seven, D.
Yes, sir.
Okay, a request to reconsider the denial for the Fort Saloon and Eatery.
Yes, seven, D, as you said, the request to reconsider the, the denial of the Fort Saloon and Eatery as a smaller OTB site with changes amended. This is in the Curra County. We originally considered this at the November 13th meeting, I believe. It was denied at that time, and it was denied for, for one reason, one reason only at that time. It was where the placement of the terminals were in the bar in the lower area and did not have, it was not ADA accessible, handicapped accessible. So the resubmission, if you look on your maps that are provided, Commissioners, and if you look at the the proposals and different things, the machines are, or the terminals are located at the entry. It says in the submission, it's in the upper bar. You know, it's, it's in an open area. It's not in an upper bar. It's a foyer, if you see there. If you're looking at that map, you can see from the top in, into the, the area. That is the entryway. You make a right-hand turn. It's on the other side of a fireplace in a waiting area. So I don't know if you're all able to get your maps. And if I can read through the staff, staff report, it was, as I said, it was originally requested and suggested as a test market proposal in Neutrona County. At the November 13th meeting, as I said, it was denied due to the non-compliance with ADA. Upon reviewing the amended submission, the HHR terminal placement has been moved to the front of the location close to the front door. Wyoming Downs LLC is permitted for live racing and simulcast paramutual events for 2021 to include simulcasting historic racing in satellite locations across the state. Wyoming Downs is currently in good standing with the Gaming Commission, holds the county and city approvals. At this point in time, I am going to turn it over to Special Agent Steinberg to go through the, the review of it. But at this point in time, also, I'd like to say that we do recommend denial of the request, noting there are several security concerns as they relate to the location and its location specific. I'll turn it over to Special Agent Steinberg. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Moore, President Davis, Commissioners. I'll be brief. I think Director Moore covered a lot of the important elements of this. The location that was submitted to us is at the front of the facility. I've been there several times. It's just not conducive or in an area that I would say is easily overseen by staff at the facility. The diagram's a little bit off. The actual host station is further back, which blocks the view. You cannot see or would not be able to see the games from the bar area because it's a lower elevation, and there's a rail. I did talk to the manager on one of my trips there about that concern, and her response was, we would have the host when that person is at the, the host stand, keep an eye on it. However, she did admit that there would be a bulk of that person's time away from that area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Special Agent?
Um, yes. President Davis.
Go ahead, Randy.
Special Agent, Special Agent Steinberg. I also don't see, you know, in the original plan, there were surveillance cameras. I don't see any surveillance cameras that were drawn into the drawing that we have here. Did they have anything that said where they were going to put their surveillance cameras?
I believe that there was in, in a, this is the second drawing that we got. The, the first one, there was some, it was, we were unable to determine exactly where in the facility it was, but there were some cameras in that one. This one that you see in your packet was the second drawing that showed us exactly where in the facility. So yes, there, there were plans for cameras, but you're right, they're not in, in this diagram.
And another question, as they were in the first diagram, they were located inside the bar, which was a restricted area for 21 and older. It appears, though, this position doesn't have that restriction on it. I mean, they're out of that area.
Commissioner, that's correct? Correct. Yes, that is correct. It's a non-age-restricted area.
Okay, we follow up with that is, is, as well. The locations, you know, it's, it's very close to our office down here, but I think as much as anything, it's eclectic, maybe is, is a good word. So it's, it is difficult. But, you know, at this point, we have not had any of the other test market locations open at this point in time. And, and once we get those open and we, we have better feel on how they're going to function and work in real world, then we'll have some ideas, what works, what doesn't work, what's needed, what's not needed, and then we can come up with rules with it in, in moving forward. But I think at the time being, you know, again, part of the suggestion is, let's get these other ones open. Let's see how they operate, how they function, and, and then monitor that for the next several months, and then we have a good feel. It is a cautious approach, but I think it's the right approach.
Thank you, Charlie. And with that, Eric, I see you raised your hand.
President Davis, Commissioners, Director Moore. And I think this is a good discussion because we really want to be able to assist the bar owners. And, and what happened on this one, of course, we came forward and it didn't qualify for the ADA requirements. The bar owner requested us to, you know, a new location that wheelchairs could get in, and we actually could place several doors to eliminate the entrance and exit in that area there. But I think the bigger picture is, is, you know, for the bar owners, they're a little confused on why you can put some machines anywhere with no approvals, and others, you have to have certain approvals. But I agree with Director Moore. If we could table this, and so we could meet with the bar owner, the city, and the commission, but also recognize that we're want to work with the bar owners because they do want to see these additional revenues. In fact, it came to, in light with Rick Cook and myself, we had a conversation, should we withdraw this? But the bar owner said, can we bring it forward so we can have a discussion because we really want to do business with you guys? And I said, that's fair enough. I said, we'll put it up there so we can have a discussion. I believe that he possibly could overcome those areas with the proper doors and cameras and modifications to his building. But I think we owed it to him. But I would suggest that possibly we table it. We see how the other facilities work, and then we work directly with the investigators to make sure they're comfortable with it, and the city, and the bar owner, and then bring it back if it's appropriate at that time. Thank you, President Davis.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Eric, you want to withdraw this proposal right now?
I believe that would be the best point to satisfy the commission and also to allow the bar owner another day to make sure that we get in full compliance.
Okay, Charlie.
I think we should withdraw.
Okay, with that, then there'd be no action on this item?
That's correct, sir.
And no further discussion, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Well, thank you. So now we're done with item seven, D, that has been withdrawn. Now we are going to item seven, E. Is that correct? Idabet.com presentation?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, Charlie, if you want to take this a little bit further here.
Commissioners, seven, E, Idabet.com presentation. At this point, we'll turn it over to Wyoming Downs to present to you what they have.
Well, I appreciate, President Davis, Commissioners, Director Moore. I want to again congratulate President Davis for being reelected. We like to see you sitting in that chair. But I'm Eric Nelson. I'm one of the owners of Wyoming Downs and excited to be here. I'll take you to a little history real quick before we get to the presentation. I want to introduce my team today. That'll be Frank Lamb. He'll go over some of the regulatory areas and what it really means, the horse racing, and being able to send the signal around the world. Jim and Melissa Bernard, hopefully they're on the line. I know they had some communication problems. We have worked with the Benards for a long time. They are the owners of Idabet, and they can explain in detail part of the presentation that you'll see today. I've got Rick Cook on some regulatory issues too, or comments that he may have, and our attorney Tracy LaCocke, who's our wonderful attorney, joining us today. So right now, if I could, President Davis, I'd like to turn it over to Frank Lamb, and then I'll come back and visit with you and make some of the overview and the history, and then do the presentation in part. Jim Bernard is prepared, hopefully, to do the part of the presentation on some of this slide presentations you'll see, and then we'll have questions and answers after that time. But please chime in at any time. Frank, are you still with us?
I am.
You're on the floor.
Thank you, President Davis, members of the commission. You know, the best deposit wagering was, was approved in Wyoming quite a few years ago. It was in the, the early 2000s. And at that time, I was the director of the Paramutual Commission, and Mr. Nelson was operating Wyoming Downs, and he actually had a, a ADW company called Pony Up Bet that was approved by the commission and, and operated at that time. And only operated a couple of years before he had sold the track, and the new owner chose not to, to continue with it. But it was growing very rapidly at that time, and the, the numbers, or the, the money from, from that was, was fueling the, the Breeders' Fund. Nothing like what historic racing is now, but it was helping a lot. And, and it never really got to see its full potential. When Commissioner Nelson talked to me about this idea of using a ADW to take bets at the OTBs, I, I said, well, you know, I don't think that's ever been done before, but that doesn't bother Wyoming because we've done a lot of firsts in the, in the simulcasting and horse racing world. Excuse me. But so I got to looking at it, and the more I looked at it, the more I thought it was a pretty good idea. And I figured we were going to be the first ones to do it, if, if we could get through all the hurdles. And And so the other day, when I was looking, researching another matter, excuse me again, for the legislature, I was looking at the OTB sites, websites in New York. And lo and behold, there it was. They take their wagers through their advanced deposit wagering companies. Each one of them has a different one. And that's how they, that's the only way you can you can make wagers at their off-track facilities is through their advanced deposit wagering sites. So we are not going to be the only only one. And we're not going to be the first. But I'm I'm glad to report that that we have a a blueprint out there to follow and and to see how how we can proceed. So that's all good news. I think that the potential here is 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 pretty huge, not only for our off-track facilities, but I'm really excited about the live track facilities and what we can do with our own advanced deposit wagering company. I can see the handle at Wyoming Downs easily doubling if if done properly. And the branding of Idabet, rebranding of Idabet, that Mr. Nelson will cover later, rebranding it to Bet Y O and and giving us worldwide presence of wagering opportunities. And the way I'm reading it, the taxes are going to be here in Wyoming. And so it's it benefits everybody, benefits the breeders, benefits our off-track facilities and benefits live racing. So I'm I'm truly excited about it. I I think, of course, the devil's in the details and we'll get to those here in a minute. But I think that's something we need to take a serious, hard look at and and move forward with just as soon as we possibly can. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Nelson.
Eric, we can't hear you.
There we go. President Davis, Commissioners, Director Moore. Today, I'm really excited. We've been working on solutions and things that are going wireless and things that are virus-free. And we've actually hit a little small gold mine for Wyoming Downs. Today's presentation is asking for your approval to move forward with the Idabet acquisition. We are purchasing Intermountain Racing Entertainment LLC, which owns Idabet. We'll buy all the eventually have the whole Idabet will be transferred to Wyoming. It'll be called Bet Y O. So we have that name recognition. I will anticipate that the live racing handle through this will be 300% to 400% from where we were. So we can take a look at a handle of 80,000 on the average, and I'll anticipate anywhere from 240,000 to 320,000. Well, that that's a great thing for our horsemen. It gives us the exposure that we need on the horses, the live track, the streaming we upgraded last year. We've got a first-class streaming operation now. Now we can send this signal around the world, highlight our horses and our state and our and especially our racetrack there. So there's absolutely, it's it's absolutely going to be exciting for the horsemen because now they'll be able to wager not only in Wyoming, but you have folks up in Idaho that can chime in and bet on their horses there and watch them. We can bet basically all over the world if you're someplace else. Now, the interesting thing is, we've done this before. In 2004, I did have Pony Up Bet people bet around the world, and I'm not aware of any concerns from the commission. It is regulated very closely. It has all the safeguards that that you'll hear. And so with that, I'd like to go ahead and continue on. And do we have the slide presentation that we can go to? There you go, Nick. So let's see here if I got it. So we'll go to the next page. I don't know how to do that. Do I turn it, Nick, or do you? All right, thank you. All right. So this Idabet is is a paramutual advanced deposit wagering. We are licensed as a ADW provider. Currently, right now, Idabet is licensed in Wyoming. And every one of the commissioners currently or anyone in the state can go to Idabet and bet that. The only thing we really want to do is change that name to Bet Y O. That's going to be the main focus there. Of course, we're going to be utilizing this. This is fast bet times 100. And so this is how well this site is put together. It's currently an out-of-state ADW, and we're moving it to Wyoming. Next page, please. There is one typo here. It says 50 racetracks worldwide. It's over 150 racetracks at this time. In fact, I have several calls today with some dog track owners that would like to put their track back up on the website here, Idabet. So we'll be looking at that. But the, again, going back to the live race coverage, international betting exposure, this is a first-class operation. You're probably looking at anywhere from 10 to 20 ADWs that are currently operating or could take bets from Wyoming that, but Wyoming doesn't have its own ADW. So this will be back in action and exciting at that page, Nick. Our intention to, pending the commission approval, is to acquire all the stock of Intermountain Racing Entertainment and Idabet LLC. We plan to rebrand rebrand it, Bet Y O, and that should be an exciting operation for the whole state and all the horsemen. Next page. Now here's where we probably differ between Rick Cook, myself and Frank. I'm I'm expected to see handle increase maybe three folds in this in inside the state of Wyoming and 300% to 500% as far as wagering at the live track and betting on our facility at the live track, off-track locations through the ADW or from the luxury of your home, which is all perfectly legal at that time. So that's that's going to be one of the the bets we got out there between the three of us. And I think I covered, next page, Nick, if you would. And that shows the performance. This is the bottom end performance. We like to project it low. However, you can take a look at the opportunities that are there at the very low end of the scale there. And it shows a very positive, brings tax dollars, it provides more coverage of Wyoming Downs and Wyoming. We'll basically be doing some commercials in between that of Wyoming itself and the state of Wyoming to promote the state there. Next page, please. This is where I'd have Jim come in, but I'm not quite sure. Jim, are you available on the phone?
Can you hear me?
There you go. Jim, you want to?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sure. So Jim, if you could, I'll turn it over to you, Jim Bernard. This is President Davis.
You have the floor. Eric, it seems that we have a technical challenge going.
All right. Well, I'll take it from here then. Basically, this is part of the site.
Hello?
Yep. Jim, we're we're having a hard time connecting with you, so I'll run with it if it's okay. If you go to the Idabet website, there's probably 20 pages on the screenshots there that are great, great detail of the safety issues there, the under-age gaming scenario and the safeguards that are put into place. But also, it also shows different selection, funding methods, all that can be, all that are legal, that are presently used with Idabet. So I'm not going to bore everybody with every deposit and withdrawal, but they have full access to their account basically at all times. And we have several call centers to make sure that we're up to date with everybody and you can do it through your phone with one of these sources there. Next page, please. Good job, Nick. All right. Our first customer, he's going to put $500 on his account. So he simply has to go to the website itself. Now, as you'll see, you'll see eBay technology. Now eBay actually is licensed and they're a vendor. That's our vendor. They're kind of like a United Tote or an Amco. So eBay is a licensed facility. They send their signals out around the world. And there's other I ADWs that run through this site. Next page, please. This actually shows you in detail the next four or five pages. I won't really get into all the details, but you can virtually find all your past performances, all your history of it. You can get into jockeys and a lot of other areas that are much more informative than anything currently that we offer with inside the state there. And that really takes us to the majority of the last four pages, President Davis. And at this point, I'd like to take questions from the commission for Frank, Rick. If we can get, oh, shoot, Melissa back on the phone there with Jim, that'd be great. If not, I'll handle a few questions too. So back to you, Director Moore, and see what questions we've got.
Okay, Nick, if you want to get us back to the other screen. Holy moly, there we are. All right. At this time, before we go into discussion, where are you, Charlie? There, just a blank. Do we need a motion on the floor in order to go into discussion, Charlie?
You know, actually, at this point, I think this is a a presentation-only section at this point. And, you know, I I think it's a, it's it's an incredible platform. I've had the opportunity to to be there at different times over the last several years. As as a point of clarification, yes, Idabet has been licensed in the state of Wyoming as an out-of-state provider. The out-of-state providers have a completely different licensing process than the than an in-state ADW would have. And and again, using the acronyms, I apologize, advanced deposit wagering is ADW. So and also just a a point too, a week ago, we attempted to get the TRPB to communicate and with with us and with Mr. Nelson to kind of go through this and talk about it. The meeting ended up being kind of cut short a little bit. But we'll continue to to look at this and get a review in and get Mr. Lanell from the TRPB to give us just a brief executive summary. And I I look forward to working with with Mr. Nelson and Mr. Lanell with the TRPB to get it all cleared up.
What's the TRPB?
Thoroughbred Racing Protective Bureau. They do our auditing of our historic racing and and a lot of it. And then, and they basically have as I consider some of the highest expertise with the advanced deposit wagering in the different wagering monitoring systems.
Okay, with that being said, Eric, you raised your hand.
You know, I am. I I let me make sure I can speak. You know, today, I fully thought that the commission may grant the permission to move forward. And I truly don't want to discourage any further communication with the other parties that are investigating. But I would like to remind the commission, we are a licensed ADW provider, Wyoming Downs. I would also like to remind the commission that the ADW site that we're currently purchasing is is 10 to 12 years old and and is operating currently. Maybe as a consideration to meet halfway in the middle is I'm so confident of the system itself is that we could have a test market on it, run it full blast for 120 days. And in the event that it does not work, because it's really important for our live racing that we have this on board and we have to plan on it today to actually send out that signal, is that you consider for today that you give it a temporary license for four months so we can operate it accordingly? And then in the event that it has any flaws in it, that we will shut that system down and send it back to Idaho. But I I think, President Davis, we have been working on this for months. This application has been in since December. It has been discussed for years. And we've taken it up a level by purchasing Idabet. And I would like that consideration. It is top of my wheel of considerations at this time. And I lean it back to you, President Davis.
Thank you, Eric. With that, how does that sit with the commission here? We have a couple of proposals out there. One to investigate a little further, if I hear things right from Charlie, want to go with the temporary four-month trial and or the full-blown approval. Is that President Davis, Commissioner Curra? Go ahead, Nick.
For Mr. Nelson, if this has been in the works for over four months, how come this is the first time I've heard of it? Or has this the first time the commission's heard of it?
President Davis, Commissioner, I'm not quite sure. This was submitted by our by our attorney, Tracy, in December of last year. And I I know the commission has been overloaded with skill game operators and operators like myself opening up new locations. But we've been standing in line on this since December with a full package in there from from what I'm aware of, to the best of my knowledge.
All right, thank you. Is that, have we had this information at our fingertips, Charlie?
Thank you, President Davis, Commissioner Curra. We received the first request on this December 3rd and 1st, I believe the date was. Nick has the file. I don't have the file in front of me. And subsequently, we sent an email out to Mr. Nelson, kind of giving him an update and a status. They responded and then we had another, we were looking for some additional information. And again, we just haven't been able to get to it. That is correct. But also to facilitate it, three weeks ago, I reached out to the TRPB to get this looked at from their level. And that's where it's at. It will have a concrete response to you shortly. But again, nobody's sandbagging as it seems like here. We're trying to get everything done and we address it as they they come. And again, last week, we attempted to have a meeting on this. And I'm not going to go into the details of it and try to clarify a lot of things and and get some understanding. And that meeting was short.
Okay. So has the investigators, have they looked at this and do they feel comfortable with it to go along with for a short-term okay on it?
President Davis, Commissioner Curra, I guess I would leave that for Nick and and Mike to respond to that.
Okay.
And they may have some of the dates that the the original request came in.
Thank you, President Davis, Commissioner Curra, if I may. So we got the original, our office actually received the original submission on January 4th. We've looked through a lot of this, embedded a lot of this stuff. However, I don't feel like I'm in a position to say I'm great with it because the ADW stuff is all very new to me. So I would really leave that up to the commission and how they feel, based on the presentation that was given.
Eric, you raised your hand?
Oh, maybe I could, President Davis, maybe maybe I could refer back to Frank Lamb. He gave a little more history on the pre the approval back in 2003 and '04 and the current license that we currently hold as an ADW operator. In addition to that, that the current license that Idabet holds in Wyoming, this is more of a vendor approval than a new system whatsoever. Frank, are you still on board?
I am. President Davis?
Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. Well, you know, the the perhaps what we we need to be looking at here is whether or not, Eric is correct that that the that Idabet has been licensed in in Wyoming, but Charlie's also correct that it's been licensed as an out-of-state provider. I think we need to get it licensed as an in-state provider, and that's what I would ask for today. As a, if you want, even if you want to do it temporarily, get it, get us licensed as an in-state provider, then we'll work out the details. But with, Eric is correct, we've got to get moving on this to get all of everything in place so that we can, we can carry our signal worldwide this summer. And so if that's doable, that would be what I would suggest or would hope for, that we could get licensed. licensed today, approved today as an in-state provider, ADW provider for Wyoming Downs. And so, um, you know, I would, I would throw that out there for your consideration.
Thank you Frank. With that Charlie, what are the steps to do this? To get them approved Idabet from out of state to in-state?
Thank you, President Davis. I think at this point in time, um, if we can get the executive summary report from, uh, the TRPB, Urban Racing Protective Bureau and let them do an interview, um, with Mr. Nelson and Mr. Lamb, that would be, that would complete our confirmation process and we would be comfortable.
Okay, for that to occur, what timeframe are we looking at then Charlie for the setup that, uh, to happen?
President Davis, uh, you know, I, I can't answer that without communicating with several other people. I'm sure Wyoming Downs will be available as soon as possible. Um, I just have to check with the, uh, the other individual that would be involved and see.
So if that was the situation then Frank, when on your behalf, could we coordinate this with Charlie and the Thoroughbred Association there?
Mr. President, yes, um, as far as I'm concerned, yeah, we could do it immediately. And perhaps we could have just as a special phone meeting, one item, one agenda item, once we get the, these, uh, these things to, to kind of gel a little bit and, um, uh, so we can move forward.
So then I guess from our point of view as a commission, do we want to wait for that to happen? Or do we want to go ahead and, uh, approach this from, uh, yeah, we can do it if you get the right approval like we have with the OTBs and stuff like that. Does that make sense?
Mr. President, Mr. President, that would be a great, great way to go in my opinion. Of course, uh, there may, but, uh, that would be, that'd be a great idea.
What's the commission feel on this?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Dwayne.
I am not comfortable making a decision on this with the information that we have right now. I would like to take, um, a slower approach to this, uh, make sure that we have, uh, the Thoroughbred Association, make sure our investigator for, um, on, um, on board with this and, and get the recommendations from Charlie. Before we move forward, I, I see the agenda item and feels like we're taking action on something that is the cart before the horse on this thing. And I would take a sit back approach on it and all the information so we can make an educated decision on, on how we want to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, is there other comment from commissioners at this time?
Uh, President Davis, Commissioner Linen?
Go ahead Randy.
I have a question and I don't care who answers it, whether it's Frank or whether it's Eric. Frank mentioned that, uh, the only way you can go ahead and bet a simulcast in the state of New York is through an ADW account. Is that correct Frank?
Uh, Mr. President, Commissioner Linen, from everything I could tell, just looking at websites and, and the, the one I kind of zeroed in on was Suffolk, Suffolk OTB, there's, there's like four different OTBs in New York, but I zeroed in on Suffolk and, uh, cause it's on Long Island and I used to live there. So I, I, I knew the area and I knew where they're, where they were located. And, um, they for sure, that, that it says very clearly on their, on the front page of their website that all bets will be taken through, uh, it's called quickbets.com. And, um, you know, I thought it was just a, uh, it just makes so much sense that they do that. And, and I looked briefly at the other OTB websites and they all had something similar as far as an ADW, but I didn't dig into the other ones as far.
Hey, Mr. President, follow-up question.
Go ahead Randy.
Are you, would you plan to go ahead and do that? I mean, in your OTB locations where you have your simulcast window, window or your, or your, you know, basically machines that you can make your bets on and do your handicapping, would you, are you, is it your intent to move away from a totally, or, uh, as it is now, basically a manned simulcast window and have this done all totally electronic through wild bets?
Mr. President, Commissioner Linen, yes, uh, that's, that's the direction that New York went and that's, that's kind of the idea. It, uh, um, and, and I, you know, I have to agree, it's just, it's, it's a better system. You, it's a better way to, to, um, to track your, your players and it's a better way to track age. You know, making sure minors don't have accounts. Um, it's just, it, it makes sense in this day and age to be able to do that. You know, I, I don't know answers to all the questions on it, but, um, like I said, we, I'm so happy that we have a blueprint out there now that we can take a look at, um, to, to kind of get those answers so we won't have to, to reinvent the wheel here.
Eric, you have a question?
President Davis, Commissioner, Director Moore. Yeah, this is a powerful tool, there's no question. It's technology that's been there for a long time. Uh, but coming back to, um, Commissioner Laner, Laner, excuse me, the, the, right now, when you go into an OTB, you can bet one track possibly or maybe two tracks. Here you'll be able to go in and they'll assist you in the registration of it. Uh, the system is working today in Wyoming. Uh, anyone in Wyoming can do it from any place legally. The only difference is it's Idabet and it's not Bet Wild. And I want it to be Bet Wild so we can send our live signal out and encourage betters to bet on our live track. That's why I'm pressing so hard today. It's legal, it's working right now. Every talking about is going through a test system, even a test system, because it's been operating for 10 years. So, um, I'm a little discouraged because I really want to work for the horsemen. This has nothing to do with HR terminals. This has nothing to do with skill game based product. This is about horse racing. This is about sending out a signal worldwide that we're doing today, folks. We're not doing it yesterday. It's happened for the last five, 10 years going into this, uh, this system here. So I would encourage the commission to consider to allow us to turn this system from Idabet to Wyoming bet. Let us utilize this system. I'm sure everybody would be excited because there isn't any really questions there. The proof is in the pitting, the pudding, because it's going on right now. It's happening in Wyoming, but we don't own the website. It's Idaho's and I want to make it Wyoming's. So the testing, you can take a look at it, uh, over the next four months when people are operating it and utilizing it. All our customers want it, that it'll be an exciting thing. So I'd like to consider that, President Davis.
Thank you Eric. Commissioners.
President Davis, if I may, uh,
Go ahead Nick.
Liaison Schiffer has had his hand up for quite a while here.
I don't even see him. Go ahead.
Uh, good, good afternoon, President Davis, members of the commission. Uh, this is a very interesting, excuse me, proposal. It, it raises a couple of questions in my mind that maybe, uh, Mr. Nelson or his staff could answer. One is what I'm hearing and harkening back to the discussion we had in November about the federal legislation, I think it was November, uh, to, uh, bring all these tracks under the federal rule. It would seem to me if this is enacted, uh, per se, that would bring Wyoming Downs under the federal auspices. And, and I would like to hear a reaction to that if, if you all feel appropriate. Also, the additional exposure outside of Wyoming of Wyoming races is going to, uh, create the possibility that the animal rights groups that are pressing hard and various jurisdictions are going to be able to, uh, really take a hard look at Wyoming and raise, uh, the, uh, specter of whether our procedures and are, are what they're going to be good with or raise other, you know, concerns from, from them. So maybe those issues need to be addressed, uh, as part of this discussion and I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could, President Davis, the, actually, the, uh, the horsemen at Wyoming Down, they want this. They understand how powerful this is and they're proud to show their races to the country and how we conduct our racing in Wyoming there. The, they can opt out if the federal, if we don't want to be scrutinized by the federal government on the new proposal area and, and not utilize and send out the signal of Wyoming Downs. But even with that, the ADW part of it is a critical part of it. You know, with the, uh, operations in today's society. The animals part of it, well, all I can tell you is I'm proud, proud of Wyoming Downs. I'm proud of the job that we do. I would put our track up against any track so anyone can see our track out there. So I'm not scared of no animal rights guy that's coming out there because we work hard toward it. We're horse racing, we bring in a crowd. If I'm going to shut down that ADW, I ought to shut down my grandstands and we fought so hard to get people in there. I want to shake it out to the world and I want the world to see it just like the big guys do. Uh, and they're doing it right now, we can't, I want to, I want the opportunity to do it. That's why I'm going to fight for it hard today. President Davis.
Thank you Eric. Did that answer your question Stan?
Uh, I'm sorry, it was really meant to be just a concern and to raise the issues. I, 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 you know, I'm convinced that Mr. Nelson is correct in what he's saying. I, I just think it's something that we should all be aware of and making a decision here on this, uh, this issue. So thank you.
Thank you Dan.
Mr. President, Frank, Frank here.
Go ahead Frank.
Uh, if I may, Mr. President, uh, to address Mr. Schiffer's concerns, I, I understand what he's talking about with the newly enacted federal law. And it, it is tied to simulcasting. If you're sending your signal out, or if you're not sending your signal out, a state could, appears at this time could opt out of the federal requirements. Uh, we're, and that, of course, like I say, that's what it appears to be at this time. The, you know, there, that's in the, in the beginning stages as, as, uh, Mr. Schiffer knows. And, and we're watching that as well and, and we are taking that into consideration, uh, as we move forward.
Okay, I do have one question. You guys alluded to changing Idabet to Wild Bet or Bet Wild. And there was taxes that would be collected in Wyoming from a revenue point of view in the state of Wyoming. What are your predictions there? Do we have any predictions of what that could generate for the state of Wyoming?
Mr. President, Frank Lamb here. We don't have the, the actual numbers, other than if you take the numbers that Mr. Nelson gave you earlier, uh, and just figure that you get, the state gets 1.5% and the breeders get 0.4%. There, there's your numbers. So, um, it, um, it, it could have a substantial impact.
Okay, so it would be licensed in Wyoming. And all right, I'm following, I didn't know if there was a different taxation involved with that corporation other than what you're talking about with the betting side of it.
Mr. President, that's the way I understand it. When, when, when it was operated before, when Pony at Bet was operated before in Wyoming, uh, Wyoming saw the taxes from it. So, um, that's the way I would assume it would operate at this time. That's correct.
Okay.
President Davis, we also have another hand up from Mr. Joyce.
Okay, Eugene, hit your vision button. There you are.
Okay, Eric, just breathe through your nostrils, I'm not going to try to kneecap you here. Thank you, President Davis. Um, I, I have a couple of questions and, uh, one of them I guess is, so by going to the system, would you obviate the, having to work with, uh, United Tote at the tracks and at your OTBs, you would ostensibly be your own paramutual system operating in the state? That's, that's one, one question. And I, you know, President Davis, you had a good question too on the taxation rate. I know there's a different tax rate on ADW wagers versus live wagers or wagering, uh, on simulcast in the OTB. So those would be two questions I have and I'm happy to listen to the answer.
President Davis, if I may, uh, President Davis, Commissioners, Director Moore. The live track would actually be a combination. The system itself with the eBay that is a system that's designed around the, uh, Idabet system is United Tote. So United Tote is the same system that we're using today. We're just broadening the, uh, opportunities to use a mobile device versus a typewriter at the locations itself. It's much easier, much safer. Uh, the employees themselves can now rely on the system itself. So we'll, we would be utilizing United Tote system in Cheyenne and in Evanston, uh, along with the Idabet system. Uh, the smaller locations would just use the upgraded system here with Idabet. Eventually I could see that the future would be that, uh, you need a smartphone or a tablet to wager. And that's all basically, uh, that everything's heading toward in the future that's already being done in New York. So that's a combination, but I want to make sure that it's clear. I understand the taxation rate is exactly the same as the simulcasting rate that we basically have once we make it Bet Wyoming. So that's going to drive revenue. Uh, the other part of it is we're still a United Tote system there. So the system is being utilized, folks. His only difference is Wyoming Downs doesn't have his name on it. And I'm happy to do it for a period of time. And if it doesn't work, then we will go back to the old system.
Did that answer your question Eugene?
Yes, yes it did. And, uh, one other question for, uh, Mr. Nelson. Look me in the eyes now, Mr. Nelson. Are you, are you, are you going to be selling this to other operators in the state?
With, with the consideration of Mr. Joyce, yes.
Thank you.
President Davis, this is Commissioner Linen.
Go ahead Randy.
The question, this is directed to, um, Charlie. Um, you say the licensing is different from out of state to in-state. I understand where this is going and I, you know, I, I'm not opposed to it. I would like to have the TRP, uh, TRPB, uh, weigh in on this. And if we could get that, that done soon, I think we could go, go ahead and have a special meeting and do that and maybe license it for a short period of time to see how it exactly goes. My question is, is that would Wyoming Downs have to, because they are buying this from the out of state operator, would they have to go ahead and resubmit a licensing agreement for Wild Bets? Or could they operate this under their existing ADW permit?
President Davis, Commissioners, Eric Nelson at Wyoming Downs. We're actually buying all the stock of Rocky Mountain Entertainment Racing that owns Idabet. And so all the present contracts, we basically assume immediately because we are a licensed operator in Wyoming, uh, as a, as a licensed operator and as a current ADW provider with that opportunity. So the answer is we have all the checks and balances in place, uh, to continue on the operation. We're just making a name change in essence.
The question I had was direct, was directed to, uh, Director Moore. My question is, is the way we operate now, could they take this over or would they, and since they do have a current ADW permit, could they assume this when it comes in because even though it's an out of state operator? I, I just, I want some clarification on that.
Thank you, uh, President Davis, Commissioner Linen. Um, those are some of the questions that we've had as well here. Um, I've, I've asked for the ownership structure from Mr. Nelson, how that would go. Um, and in last week on Thursday, we started to have some of that discussion where we could get that cleared up. And then the meeting did get shut, up short. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll continue to go down that road if that's your wishes and, and get that all figured out to where we have a complete understanding. But, you know, Mr. Nelson is exactly right. Um, he is licensed as a ADW provider, uh, with He is licensed as a ADW provider with Fastnet Mobile at the racetrack and in the OTBs currently. So, you know, it's it's, this is totally up to you. Like I said, we wanted to have a few of those other questions answered, and we could potentially, if this is what the commission wants, schedule a a meeting sooner, a special meeting to address this. But also, I'd like to have Mr. Taylor involved in a little bit in part of this as well to clarify things.
President Davis, Commissioner Lyman, again, again, another question directed at Executive Director Moore. What is the main difference between an out-of-state license and an in-state license for an ADW?
Thank you, President Davis, Commissioner Lyman. An out-of-state ADW license in our statutes is basically a may. They may license with it. The intent of that, when they drafted the legislation, was to give us the ability to license and potentially draw some of their revenues back to the state for the horsemen, for purses. And so we do that. It's a very small to keep them enticing them to to do that. And again, it's a may. If they decide at any point that they can walk away. So so how we've done that, when we've licensed them, as long as you're licensed in another jurisdiction, Oregon is is typically the jurisdiction that that we require, and Idabet is through the eBay Technologies is licensed in Oregon. We have gone ahead and and licensed those individuals. So now we're looking at it with a with a little different lens, I guess, a little closer, you know. Where will the call center be? You know, how is it going to function? Who's responsible? A lot of those things. Is it still Idabet operating it, but operating on a different name in in Wyoming? So those are the questions that we're we're trying to get clarified, and we will. Mr. Nelson, we have no problem. We'll get it, get it figured out.
President Davis, if I may, this is Commissioner Wildcat.
Go ahead.
I just actually had, I've got a ton of questions actually about this, just kind of looking around. Now, you mentioned that this would be a mobile device at the tracks, but then you also mentioned that we could bet across state lines. Is that going to be the capability of this new YO Bet also?
President, President Davis, yes, that is correct. Currently, you can go to Idabet and you can bet around the world. The Interstate Act of 1978 provided simulcasting interstate wagering. The there are restrictions that if you have a state and a driver's license that's not in a state that's approved, then you can't register to do that. So the safeguards are there. The operations at the live track, we'd still have United Tote on the terminals. We would also have Idabet, and we probably would have Fastbet too, to take care of our Utah wagers that couldn't couldn't register under the Idabet. So Idabet, though, what that will provide the live track is a live stream around the world that people can wager into our facility and bet on our horses and see them. Without the wagering part of it, our horsemen lose out probably on hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements around the state. And anytime you can highlight their horses, they're real excited about it. Hopefully, that answered the question. The answer is yes, we want to continue what we have, but we want to bolster the operations and the opportunity for our horsemen at Wyoming Downs and throughout the state. Thank you.
President Davis, one more. The taxes collected on that, will that be on parity with just when they're at the same level that they're placing a bets at the location, the physical location? Is there going to be any administrative fees or anything taken out for for that?
President Davis, Commissioners, that is correct. It's the same fee structure, and so it's just going to bolster the revenue straight along, straight across the board. Whereas I, if I may, whereas today, we're just getting a fraction of of a dollar of a source market fee. So we take the source market fee and we move it into a full percentages into Wyoming.
Okay. You have any more questions there? Commissioner Wildcat?
I have ten more, but as I'm looking through this, I'll probably come up with a bunch more, and then I can ask them at a later time. Thank you.
Okay. So where are we at here now, Commissioners? What's, Charlie, have we got a recap or we have nothing on the floor? Not really even a direction to go at this moment.
I think it's up to you, folks.
Commissioners, what are your pleasure? What would you like us to do here? I guess option one is to get this together, get these answers done with, and schedule a special meeting with this. Option two would be to approve with, say, the special four-month permit in lieu of continuing down, getting the answers. Is there other options in here?
President Davis, Commissioner Wildcat, my preference is to not not do any action today. There's still some outstanding questions that that I have and that I would like answered, and I'd like to take a look at the system a little bit more before I issue any type of approval.
Okay, so then that kind of limits us a little bit to just continue down this road in gathering this information and to have a special meeting once we obtain these information and can get some answers to these questions. Does that sound satisfactory?
President Davis?
Yeah.
If I could ask a question of Charlie, you had mentioned having input from the Thoroughbred Association. Do we have an idea what might happen?
President, President Davis, Commissioner Daigle, you know, no. Again, as I stated, our our meeting a week ago got cut short, and I can find out how quickly they can do this turnaround, but it all depends on the cooperation of Wyoming Downs to communicate with us and communicate to to them so they can do their executive summary. It it should not in a in a more, in a better world, it shouldn't take too long.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, you have your hand up?
Yes, and I and I appreciate all the comments, President Davis. And I know the meeting got cut short the other day because they weren't quite prepared. If anyone takes a look at the Idabet website, it has 20 pages of information on pretty much answers all your questions you could. The TRW was not prepared. They hadn't looked at our application at all at that time. So there wasn't really much to discuss because the questions they had, 99.9 would have been handled at that time. But I would say within one week, Frank Lamb could iron out every concern or any questions that they would have, and we could return in the shortest two weeks, hopefully do. This is a very important thing for my horsemen, and that's why I'm fighting for it, because they want to see this, they want to see their horses around the world. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'm just going to keep on it.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Frank, do you have your ironing board out?
Well, I I don't have my ironing board out, but but I I know Mr. Linell quite well and with the TRPB, and I'm pretty confident that we can work this out with one conversation if we could have it. And so we'll we'll move forward as as quickly as possible on it.
So would you consider you the point then on this to visit with Charlie and get these answers?
I work for Mr. Nelson, so if he appoints me that, I will.
Mr. Nelson.
President Davis, we couldn't have a finer man than Frank Lamb. He's a legend in Wyoming, and so we're going to keep on him because the horsemen want it. So yes, I want to have him as the point person to drive this forward for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, you're fed. Go ahead, Randy.
As Mr. Nelson just stated, the Thoroughbred Racing Association wasn't quite prepared because they hadn't studied everything. I know it's been in the pipe now today since the first part of January or for the last two and a half months. But again, I'm kind of like Mr. Pacheco or Commissioner Pacheco and Commissioner Curra. This is kind of the first that I've heard of this is today, and I don't know that I am quite prepared to make a decision today because I think there are a lot of unanswered questions and things that we need to move forward. I have no problem having another special meeting as this as a one issue, once we get some of these other questions answered.
Charlie, does that sound like a good direction for the commission to go then? Sounds like that's a feeling of the commission right now.
Yes, absolutely. And and, you know, just kind of circling back through all this, you know, Mr. Nelson, myself, and Frank have talked about these different ideas of this for quite some time, and it's been out there for a long time. It is a good product. It appears to be a good, sound product, I will say that. But but even as of February 3rd, in an email that I sent to Mr. Nelson, you know, I had a lot of questions, again, that weren't responded to, you know, is Idabet registered, or excuse me, is Bet YO registered with the Secretary of State? I also highlighted the Chapter Nine rules to make sure we were covering all those detailed security policies, so on and so forth. Again, I don't, we don't need to get get thrown anything and everything. I I do look forward to working on this. I've told this to Frank several times and told him again yesterday. I think we look forward to moving the technology and moving to that. We've just got to get cooperation from from every level of this. And, you know, actually, TRPB was was prepared for this, but they wanted to hear the responses, and and they fully understand how ADWs function, how they process, and how they function out there in the real world. So, you know, we'll we'll circle back, we'll get it quickly, and we'll allow Mr. Taylor to look at it as well, and as quickly as we can, then we'll respond to you with what we find. Thank you.
I've got one more question for Charlie, if I may. Will we need to promulgate any additional regulations for this since it is a variation? Will be going outside borders, et cetera, et cetera?
President Davis, Commissioner Wildcat, again, a great, we have Chapter Nine, and I'll forward that to you. It covers advanced deposit wagering. Advanced deposit wagering for us has has been off and on a long, you know, it's been in place for a long time. And as Mr. Nelson mentioned several years ago, they operated successfully, it appears to be, Pony Up Bet. So I'll forward those rules to you so you can see those.
Okay, well, if there are any other questions? So it looks like we have a game plan to get with Mr. Lamb and and the Thoroughbred Association, get the answer to these questions, and then get a meeting scheduled as soon as possible, as long as we have all the questions answered.
What I'll do is, excuse me, President Davis and Mr. Nelson, Mr. Lamb, I'll circle around with Mr. Linell and see his availability again, and then I'll get with you on Monday or Tuesday at the latest, and we'll see when your your availability and try to get this thing, get it cleared up. And if any of the Commissioners want to be a part of this initial discussion, Commissioner Wildcat, if you want to jump in, you know, you know, you're sure welcome to to be a part of those.
That sounds good. Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, shall we put to rest item 7E?
Yes.
All right. What's next on the agenda here? I've lost it.
Well, we're we're getting towards the end here. We have no need for an executive session. The next meeting dates are scheduled for May 14th. That's one of our next scheduled meetings. We are going to see what the the health orders are and everything at the time in Casper. I talked to President Davis this morning about potentially having an in-person hybrid meeting here in Casper. I've got to see availability of that, and I'll let you know. But we will have a meeting May 14th for sure, and maybe something sooner.
All right. Is there any?
Charlie, is that going to give us, give Mr. Nelson, Mr. Lamb, and Wyoming Downs time to get this or was that? Do we need to do a special meeting before quicker if we can get these questions answered?
Yes, I think what President Davis indicated is if we come up with the responses and the in in get this covered, we would have potentially another meeting scheduled between now and May 14th.
Okay, yeah, good. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce has his hand up. I don't know if that's a leftover or or what he's.
There you are. He was blacked out.
Yes, sorry, sorry about that. Mr. President and Commissioners, if I could ask you to consider this, just looking at our meeting dates, you know, in years past, when, you know, this industry hadn't grown as fast as it has, now that it's morphed into the gaming commission, there there are a lot of the issues and requests, I know, being funneled to the commission, and I I would I would humbly request that the commission considers having a a standard monthly meeting. There's certainly, you know, requests that are coming in on a regular basis that need to be addressed regarding the commerce of our industry, not only for the paramutual side of it, but the sure the skill game side of it. And it would just help us to to know that, you know, whatever, when we have a request, we're not asking like Wyoming Downs is right now, a special request for an urgent matter on 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 their behalf. But I I I think it's it's come time to consider possibly having a a regular monthly meeting, but again, that's your decision, and I thank you for just hearing me out.
Thank you, Eugene. I think that's been kicked around a little bit, you know, depending upon what legislation is going to shake down at us and things like that. But I I totally agree, there seems to be a lot of a lot of items on their agendas from here. So with that, is there any other comments? Nothing? Okay, well, then I guess, Charlie, we tentatively have May 14th, and we'll look at a special one. Is there any old business that we need to discuss? With that being said, then, meeting adjourned at 1:00.